Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Borghiole. Council members Martinez Beltran. McKay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to do a declaration of the posting. Deputy Clark, can you do that for me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Today's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with Government Code Section 549, 54.2.
Thank you. What we'd like to do now is do a silent invocation for about 30 seconds, and then I'm going to call up the Yak group to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So just for 30 seconds, if you can stand in silence. Thank you. Members of the Yak group, can you come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
Please put your hand over your heart for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the presentations by the Yak group, asset number five, caring school climate. Chiki, did you want to come up and say something first, or?
It's not ready yet.
They already? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Borghiole, council members, city manager, city attorney, and our community members. My name is Juliana Bristol. This is my second year in Yak, and I'm an active member. I'm a sophomore at St. Francis High School.
My name is Ash Rose. This is my first year in Yak, and I am an active member. I'm a senior at Anceboato High School.
Hello, my name is Connor Palsko. This is my first year in Yak. I'm an active member, and I'm an eighth grader at St. Catherine of Alexandria.
Hi, my name is Paris Gandhi. This is my fourth year in Yak. I'm a co-developmental asset ambassador, and I'm a senior at Anceboato High School.
Hello, my name is Agnes. This is my fourth year in Yak, and I'm also developmental asset ambassador, and I'm a senior at Oakwood.
Thank you so much for allowing us to present for you tonight. We're so excited to be back in person. This month, we are presenting September's developmental asset number 35, caring school climate. School provides a caring, encouraging environment. This is so important so that students can enjoy school and want to genuinely be there to grow in their education and their friendships.
Thank you, Juliana. This month's complimentary asset is bonding to school. Young person cares about his or her school. It's important that young people have a positive relationship with their schools to help them achieve their academic goals.
How do after-school clubs help create a caring school climate? I'm going to share a personal story that helps relate to this asset. I was in fifth grade when I first played football. I did not think I was going to like it, but once I got comfortable playing it, I loved it. Playing football with friends and trying something new to get me out of my comfort zone. After-school activities help bring the school community closer, and I guess that helps us get involved, and it requires teamwork. I think after-school activities really help form friendships and bond with other people. I really love football, and I want to play again at a high school.
How does my school provide an encouraging environment for the students? I'm a transfer student at St. Francis High School. My school offers transfer student meetings every couple of weeks to ask how we are assimilating and getting used to the school. We are provided opportunities to ask about grades, school events, or any other questions. This really helps make me feel welcomed into the community. This leads to giving students a voice. As a transfer student, the staff really wants to hear about my experience at the school so far, and they make my voice heard. Everyone's voice is important at St. Francis. Students talk to teachers about any questions they may have, or even if they just need a shoulder to lean on. We are also given many other opportunities to collaborate with other students in classes. This encourages friendship and learning as a team. Teamwork requires respect, and respect goes both ways. When I go talk to my teachers, I can see that they are really listening and have respect for me, and this helps to provide a caring, encouraging school environment.
Thank you, Juliana. Why is a positive environment important to schools? First, it improves student mental health. My freshman year, I felt overwhelmed. I didn't know where to go or what to do, but our teachers knew this. They reached out to us, put us in groups, and had us do icebreakers to make us work better as a team. Because of the actions of our teachers, we feel comfortable in school. We feel like we can do what we need to do to succeed. When we enter the classroom, our teachers treat us with respect. When we are absent or missing work, their thought is not to punish us, it is to help us improve and grow. They reach out to us, have us go to one-on-one meetings, and do everything they can to help us improve. Because of this, we feel respected and cared for. Because we feel so respected, we feel ready to learn. The Anceboato motto is do good, be great. Because of the actions of our staff, this isn't just a motto. It's a statement that every student at Anceboato knows is true. Thank you.
Now let's talk a little bit more about the October developmental asset number 10. Process safety in which a young person feels safe at home, at school, and in their neighborhood. So how does this relate to the September asset of a caring school climate? Safe at school is a baseline to creating the caring climate that one looks for. This is through the relations he has made in clubs and through Connor, friendships he's made in football, all to help create the feeling of caring around them. Counselors to important adults in my life, safe makes me feel cared for. Thank you.
Thank you, Paris, for connecting this asset with the September's developmental asset. I'd also like to point out how Juliana feels safe and welcomed in school with meetings for new students. I personally am so grateful that I'm able to grow up in an environment that values the youth's safety and takes several measures to ensure this. Through this type of climate, I'm able to go throughout my everyday activities knowing that I'm always safe and secure, and I'm also thankful that I have people I can rely on, whether it be my parents, friends, teachers, and counselors. Feeling safe is extremely important.
I would like to end this presentation off with a quote that helps relate to this asset. I'm not saying I'm going to change the world, but I guarantee that I will spark the brain that will change the world. Teachers have a huge impact on children, and often teachers go by this quote and apply it to their students. If you put good out into the world, it will spread, and eventually to the right person who will change the world. Ash found this quote in his English teacher's classroom, and we thought that was a really good idea that helps relate to this idea. Thank you so much for letting us present. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, members of the Yak leadership. I sure appreciate all those personal comments.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the city council reports. Council member Yvonne Martinez Beltran is, it's her turn. You have, I believe, five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Hello, it's great to be back with all of you. So exciting. I'll start with, I guess, since June, League of Cities, or since I've started on council, the League of Cities has been instrumental in my growth and development, and I'm very grateful to that organization. It's helped me build relationships, and I've built some deep relationships with the Peninsula Division that is our area here in the Bay Area. I spent two years on the Housing Committee, Community and Economic Development Committee. I served two years on the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and I also served on the Public Safety Committee. And I am very proud to say I've just been appointed by the League President Ali Sajad Taj to be the vice chair of Housing, Community, and Economic Development for our policy committee. And then I also wanted to share that today I joined the League of Cities Peninsula Division in Menlo Park. We had a regional talk on reliable energy supply. As I've said many times, I serve on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy. They were there with Peninsula Clean Energy, and we were talking about reliable energy supply, aligning city and community choice aggregation goals. And that was really interesting to talk about the programs that are coming out to help residents switch from gas to electric appliances, also to focus on workforce development to do the work that we're going to need to do, and looking at how we clean up our buildings and what we can do with transportation, as those are two of the biggest contributors to our carbon emissions. I also, we'll back up a bit, on the ninth, I attended the Plane Air event. It was fantastic. I was thoroughly impressed and really moved by the art, actually. If you haven't had a chance, I don't know if it's still there, but it was at Calibri, and being that I'm from here, there was a lot of landscape art that was done, and I felt myself very immersed in it. So I really, really encourage that, and I'm very much looking forward to that returning next year. I want to announce that we have the Dia de los Mortos celebration will be on the 28th of October. We will light up, it's over six-foot tall altar that we will light up, and we will have the showing of Encanto, the Disney movie, to celebrate that. So I'm really excited about that, and I hope everybody will come and join us. There will be some concessions that will be sold as well, so look for that, and hopefully we will be able to, if you have anybody special that you'd like to honor that has passed, Dia de los Mortos is the opportunity to do that, and you can bring a picture and put them on the altar and honor them. And I have a young man who is very important to the city of Morgan Hill, and I'm hoping I can talk with his mom, and we can honor him this year. I also wanted to share that we were able to give the Grange $4,500 just yesterday with a dinner that was done by Subord Vivaia fundraiser dinner that was done on behalf of the Morgan Hill Grange and the Rota Care in Gilroy, a free health clinic. So that was very exciting. On the 12th.
Excuse me, council member, your time is up.
Okay, pardon me.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the city managers' report. Do you have a report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council, and members of the community, and my teammates that are here. Our team is really excited tonight to be together for our first in-person hybrid meeting. And so I wanted to just share a few comments regarding tonight's meeting. First, I wanted to thank our professional team, our council, and their efforts in getting ready for these hybrid meetings. Many cities are moving forward with in-person meetings and not offering a hybrid capability. However, we've learned that hybrid meetings have a lot of technical complexity and require investment in infrastructure. However, we know that hybrid meetings make our meetings more accessible to all members of the community, and we are committed to doing our best to allow for remote community engagement. Please be mindful that technology, including the audio/video, as well as streaming, is a work in progress, and that we are still working out the integration of multiple platforms, which include in-person, Zoom, Channel 17, and Facebook. Please be patient with us, and please do share with me or our council, our city clerk team at ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov any comments that members of the community might have regarding our hybrid meeting. We have varying levels of comfort regarding the status of COVID in our community. The county is still recommending masks for in-person meetings. We're not requiring them at our meetings, but we do have masks available at the front if you would like one. And my next item before I jump into announcements, I want to take a quick moment to remind everyone of our council's ethics policy that identifies respect as one of our core values. The policy specifically states that we'll treat fellow officials, staff, and the public with patience, courtesy, and civility, even when we disagree on what is best for the community. Council, staff, and the community should all adhere to this norm. So as we get back to our first in-person meeting and hybrid meeting, I'll remind us to always be respectful of each other and address the issue, not the person. I believe that all who are present at our council meetings share the common purpose of making Morgan Hill the best community ever, and while we have different viewpoints and roles, let's all respect each other, consistent with our recent Morgan Hill Together program. And as a quick aside, today, driving around, I was at a left turn. In front of me, a green light didn't move, and so I waited patiently, and the light was still green, didn't move. So I thought, hmm, okay, I have places to go, people to see. I just lightly, just one honk, and then the light went red, and she put her hazards on. So she got out of her car, and there was a wheelchair. The wheelchair was being used by a person with special needs. He couldn't go anywhere. She went out of her car to go push him so that he could get to the sidewalk safely, so that he wasn't in the middle of traffic. And so, just a lesson in, let's be slow to anger and give people the benefit of the doubt. You know, I could have, you know, the first reaction is, you know, what is she doing? She's distracted, you know, but no, she stopped her car, was in the process of putting her hazards on to help a fellow human being, one that needed help to get across the street. So I leave you with that, but I do want to just share a few announcements. Tomorrow, October 20th, Jennifer Ponse, please, or she is in the back, our emergency operations coordinator, she's leading us in joining millions of people worldwide by participating in the Great California Shakeout Earthquake Drill. Each city facility will practice an initial safety reaction to an earthquake by dropping, covering, and holding on to a desk or table until the simulated earthquake stops. Teams will then evacuate to their designated assembly points. An interesting update to outdated advice is that getting in a doorway during an earthquake is no longer considered safe. We now recognize that doorways are not stronger than any other part of a building and do not provide protection from falling or flying objects, and will not be a safe place in the rare case of a building collapse. Participation will be run by our safety committee and our Office of Emergency Services. Saturday, October 29th, join the Make It Magical Team kindness ambassadors and the Youth Action Council leaders for a fun evening full of music, a pumpkin painting project, face painting, and a costume parade. The event is called Spectacular Spooktacular in the Park, and it will be at the Magical Bridge from 3:30 to 5:30. All ages, all abilities, all are welcome. And two more items. Monday, October 31st, Halloween, the Morgan Hill Downtown Association this year is hosting Safe Trick or Treat, and this is going to be from 5:00 to 7:00. Downtown businesses want to make it fun and safe for our community. Lastly, our general election is on Tuesday, November 8th, less than three weeks away. There are multiple events and resources available, including the county's registrar of voters to help voters learn about the voting process, how to register candidates and issues in the election. You can see more information on our website, and you'll notice that in front of City Hall, we do have a drop box for mail-in ballots. Mayor Protem, that concludes my report.
Thank you, city manager. The next item on the agenda is the city attorney's report. Mr. Locken, do you have a report today?
Thank you, mayor. I'm happy to report in, a little background, in 2017, the city council adopted an ordinance that, among other things, required gun owners whose weapons are lost or stolen to report theft or loss within two days. This was challenged by the state affiliate of the National Rifle Association. At the superior court level, superior court level upheld the city's ordinance, and just recently, the Sixth District Court of Appeal affirmed the trial court's order upholding our ordinance. So now we have a published appellate decision supporting the actions of the city council, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Locken. This is an opportunity now in other reports for my colleagues if they wish to report on an item. You have one minute. Would anybody like to report? No? Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And before I go into public comment, as you came in, there were speaker cards, and the speaker cards, if you fill them out and you give them to Kim in the back, raise your hand, Kim, and she will put the order as they came in. And this hybrid meeting, I'm going to just elaborate a little bit more on what you said, city manager, allows us to take public comment from people in the chambers as well as those logging in remotely. The protocol for the public comment is to take public comment from people in the council chambers first, then go to the people online or calling in. We have a new podium dedicated for public comment. This accommodation supports the city's IT security protocol, allows for people to line up so we can see precisely how many people are interested to speak on a topic. The person speaking can better be seen on the camera instead of just showing the back of their heads as it was before. Thank you, staff, for doing that. And so, public comment is an opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes, except for certain specific exceptions. The city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to thecityclerk@ccpubliccomments@morganhill.ca.gov, and you can receive a message that way. So at this particular time, deputy clerk, do we have people that wish to speak?
Please do, sir. We have Joe Beranowski, and I would like to note that Mr. Miguel Jimenez and Robert Gwynn had both ceded their time to him.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Joe Beranowski. I've been a Morgan Hill resident for 21 years. If you live in Morgan Hill, you don't need a calendar to know that it's October in an even-numbered year. All you need to do is come across someone who's running for city council and hear them promise that if elected, public safety is going to be their number-one priority. Look at any of their propaganda. For example, one candidate will tell you that public safety is his holy grail. You know it's close to election time. When it comes to fire and EMS services that make up a key part of public safety, I'm going to make sure the first, the third fire station of Bill is the common refrain. I'd be willing to bet, if you ask any one of them why the third fire station is important, the answer you would get is, well, because we need it, and we've known we need it for a long time. With the amount of public funding available always limited, there should be clear, measurable, and objective goals whenever any is allocated. Unfortunately, that's almost never the case. Having clearly communicated goals is especially important for public safety, which consumes a very high percentage of discretionary spending. And with fire and EMS, there are no mandatory federal-state regulations directing the level of staffing, response times, or outcomes. The level of fire and EMS service that any city commits to delivering is a local policy decision. In my opinion, any candidate who has thought about public safety with any degree of seriousness would talk less about building a third fire station and more about getting the city to adopt the performance objectives that Chief Hess recommended almost three years ago, which are on this slide. To my knowledge, the city has not done that, and I'm not aware of any public meeting where they've been discussed since January 2020. When he presented these next steps, Chief Hess said that, "We're not going to be able to get there overnight, but we need to have a goal we are shooting for. We need a target in order to achieve our goal." This slide was titled "Next Steps" because the recommendations came directly from the Comprehensive Standards of Coverage Assessment Study that was completed in 2019. Following from Chief Hess's description, that study is a way to take a microscopic look at where we are now and where we need to go. CityGate, the team that did the study, know that Morgan Hill does not have a policy-level response time goal, and their very first, among many recommendations, was for, quote, "elected officials to adopt performance measures designed to deliver outcomes that will save patients when possible upon arrival and keep small but serious fires from becoming more serious." That's where the seven minutes and 30 seconds come from. The report explains in urban populations, "To treat pre-hospital medical emergencies and control small fires, the first duty unit should arrive within seven and a half minutes, 90% of the time, from the receipt of the 911 call." As shown on this slide, that equates to a 90-second dispatch time, a two-minute company turnout time, and a four-minute travel time. Using robust third-party vehicular geolocation data and proprietary tools, CityGate determined that the first unit travel times in Morgan Hill were 50 to 87% slower than the four-minute target, and that's because they are being impacted by traffic congestion in key parts of the city. This map shows the first duty travel time coverage from the current fire locations, with the green indicating areas where a fire engine should be expected to reach within four and a half minutes, assuming it's in station and encounters no traffic congestion. Red indicates the road segments that would be reached as impacted by traffic congestion. As the map shows, the areas that would be impacted by traffic congestion are predominantly located in two black holes. This is an optimistic model because the travel time model was four and a half minutes. That was done because at that time, Gilroy, who participated in the study, had adopted that metric rather than four minutes. The third fire station, shown as a yellow dot, is, and staff, the ability to meet the four-minute response time is substantially improved. Not surprisingly, the lower black hole goes away completely. The third fire station is not a holy grail. It urgently needs it for reasons other than just travel time, and it will help. But as the report states, quote, "There's a significant four-minute first duty travel time coverage gap in the northeast section of the city, even with the recommended third fire station at Butterfield and Diana." And again, this was based on existing conditions in 2019. Other than the most ideal conditions, third fire station and staffing it would, of course, never be enough. Our fire department needs the equipment and tools to do their job. That includes having a transportation infrastructure that will support the onslaught of new vehicular traffic that will be generated by planned and unplanned development, which will allow the first response teams to meet the travel time standard even under peak travel conditions. CityGate team used real data as collected from the conditions that existed. The results. The results could not have factored into this reality. I want to reiterate what Chief Hess said. No matter what the city does, we're not going to get there overnight. I'm not certainly suggesting otherwise. I get it, there's a lot of other things going on. But our local government is responsible for planning for the future. Given what the 2019 studies show, whether or not the city chooses to adopt the recommended performance standards, whether or not the third fire station is completed on schedule, any reasonable notion of having public safety as your priority would include responsible planning and consider this with the utmost care and what it means for the safety of residents, and yet that's not what happened. For example, using realistic assumptions and industry-standard methodology, experts have estimated that Cockamamie's Phase II, Redwood and Crosswoods alone, are going to generate about 19,000 daily vehicle trips, or throw approximately 9,000 more cars and trucks, as if that northeast black hole was a bullseye target. At the last city council meeting, which is why I'm speaking tonight, most in the case that those estimates are, quote, unimaginable. City staff has repeatedly said that Redwood's already included in the 2035 general plan, which was the entire basis of allowing a 500, 10,000-square-foot, 70-dot doors facility to be constructed. Supposed to be confident that no tenant will be allowed to move in until traffic study is done then. until a traffic study is done then. One person, one person, left to decide what actions they need to take. That Redwood has never been considered anywhere. This is not a way to get where we need to go. It's a way to ensure we never get there. And I'm glad that tonight happened to be the night when I could be here in person and look every one of you in the face. This is an in-my-backyard situation, and I'll tell you that right now. My neighbors in Westeria, Coyote Estates, Coyote Creek, Coyote Creek, Alicante, Borrello, they're going to continue to hear me until they start standing up and telling the city that this state's safety of their family is never out of context. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berenowski. Deputy City Clerk, is there any other speakers at the moment?
I have no more speakers, sir.
How about online?
There are any members of the public online wishing to speak, please raise your virtual hand. No one, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Sorry, before I move on to the next item, which is the adoption of the agenda, I understand that there's a couple of students, at least from the high school, looking for civics credits. And I'm going to break at 8:00 for 10 minutes. When I break, you can go back to Kim. Could you raise your hand just one more time? There she is in the back. You can go to her, and she has the certificate so you can get the credit for it. So thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Deputy City Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
If I could have a motion?
Would you approve? I'll second that.
Thank you. Virgili?
Yes.
Martinez Beltran?
Yes.
McKay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk. The next item is the consent item. These are items appearing on the consent calendar that are considered routine and may be approved by one motion. Pursuant to city council policies and procedures, any member of the council or public may request to have an item removed from the consent calendar for comment or action. Before I ask any council members or members of the public to do that, if you just have a comment about one of those three items that are on the consent, I'd rather have you come up and make that comment so I can keep them on the consent so we can do a one motion approval. So at this time, I'm going to ask my colleagues if they wish to pull any item or have a question on any item. And, yeah. Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you. Mayor Portem, I'd like to make a comment, please, on number seven, which is on consent. And I'd also like to make a comment, I believe it's on number one. Item number seven is not on the consent calendar, so the consent calendar just items one through three. Okay, so I can wait on that, but number one. Can I do that now?
Make a comment on number one? Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to appreciate the staff for participating in the CRS program and highlight that it is a voluntary program under FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program, allows communities to earn flood insurance premium discounts for residents and businesses, and that there has been a 15% discount on flood insurance premium, which is an average savings of $1.50 per policy, and I thought that was a great thing to highlight, and thank you all for your work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to actually make a comment on one of our consent items. It would be item number two, just a comment. And that is that I wanted to thank Congregation Emmett for working with a library, culture, and arts commission to bring forward what is going to be, I hope, a long-term and meaningful movement, which is basically Morgan Hill Stands United Against Hate Campaign. I think it's very important that we embrace that. I think that we need to live that as a community, and so I really want to thank Congregation Emmett and Alcak for working on that.
Thank you, councilmember McKay. So can I, can I have a?
Mayor Portem, would you like to call on the public to see if any of the public would like to pull any of the consent calendar items first?
Thank you. So would there be any member of the public that would like to comment or pull an item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I would like to ask for a motion for approval of the consent item. So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Mayor Portem Virgili?
Yes.
Councilmembers Martinez Beltran?
Yes.
McKay?
Aye.
Spring?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor Portem, point of order, please. Point of order?
Sure.
Can we see where the participants are?
Sorry, I didn't get what you said.
On Zoom, it says that there's 18 participants I can see, but I'm not able to see who those participants are.
I'm going to defer that to the deputy city clerk.
If we may, let's wait until our break, and we'll talk about that. Sorry, yes.
I'm sorry?
We're ready to move on to the public hearing, item number four.
Okay, thank you, Angie. I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing to introduce an ordinance to amend the text of Title 14 related to inclusionary housing and Title 18 related to the density bonus law. So this meeting is to open and to close the continued public hearing. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. And I would like to ask for the council to move to waive the first and second reading of the ordinance.
Oh, sir. If you would like Assistant City Attorney Cynthia Hassan is on the line to provide a presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do I share the presentation remotely, or do you have it there?
If you could share it, please.
Is that working?
No.
Okay, let me try again.
Mayor Portem, may I ask a question of the city clerk?
Absolutely, thank you.
Hi, could you reverse the image? So, oh, I see you changed the image. I just, I couldn't see the presenter.
Okay, so hopefully everyone can see the screen now. Okay, good evening. Cynthia Hassan, the Assistant City Attorney. Tonight, I am presenting a draft ordinance for your consideration. I am covering three discrete but related sections of the ordinance. The first two relate to the inclusionary housing ordinance, and the third is to add density bonus provisions back into the zoning code. So first, I wanted to mention what our current code states for the inclusionary housing ordinance, which requires 10% of dwelling units in downtown and 15% outside of downtown be restricted pursuant to an inclusionary housing agreement for a term of 55 years. If the project is 100% affordable rental units, the idea is that all units should be subject to a deed restriction. But currently, because of the way the ordinance is drafted, only 10% to 15% are restricted by the inclusionary housing agreement, and then 100% affordable projects are required to record a second agreement restricting the unit's affordability. And that's usually pursuant to the state law, which requires deed restrictions also for a period of 55 years. So what we're proposing to reduce duplication is to exempt 100% affordable units from the inclusionary housing agreement requirement. Those projects will instead be subject to a recorded governmental agency deed restriction or regulatory agreement. It serves the same goal of imposing rent and household income eligibility restrictions, and it applies to all units except the manager's units, and the term is 55 years. So that's the first proposed change to the ordinance. Does anyone have any questions on this piece? Okay, I'll move on to the next one. This next one is to add seniority language to the code to avoid the loss of inclusionary units due to foreclosure. So the new language provides that resale restrictions, covenants, deeds of trust, regulatory agreements shall be senior priority to any private liens or encumbrances. And there will be an exception if the city manager determines that subordination is required for financing of affordable projects. So this is typically, if a project is foreclosed upon, we want to assure that the project that was built as an affordable project remains an affordable project. This would also come into play potentially when a project is refinanced, to make sure that those affordable restrictions remain senior to any other liabilities. The next section is about the density bonus. So the state law requires that the city have an ordinance to implement density bonus provisions. And formerly, the city municipal code contained a Chapter 18.48 that addressed affordable housing within Title 18, and that required that the city council act on all density bonus applications. So when an applicant agrees to provide a certain percentage of affordable units in a housing project, the city is required to grant one density bonus, up to four incentives or concessions, unlimited waivers or reductions of development standards, and specific parking ratios. So it is recommended that we move this to a staff-level approval because it is pretty mandatory in nature, and there are two reasons for this. It's very difficult to deny a request. We can only deny if there's a written finding of a specific adverse impact on health and safety. And there's also legislative intent that states that the intent of legislature that such conditions arise infrequently, so it's very difficult to deny any of these. And it also limits the meetings that the city holds on a project to those where discretionary action is taken. But if a denial is recommended, then the request would be brought to the planning commission. And just to reiterate, with the new law, we are only allowed to have five meetings, and so it's a recommendation to bring it to the staff level so that we are not using a meeting for something that's mandatory anyways. And then these are the findings that are required to be made to make a change to the zoning code, and staff recommends that all of these findings can be made. And I'd like to open it up for any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Spring?
Thank you, Cynthia, for your report. The one question I have, there's always a reference to the general plan as one of the findings, but I often find it fairly easy to find a reason to say it's not in compliance with what was worked on in general plan years ago, especially when it comes to all those density bonuses, parking restrictions, and so on. So what do you say to that comment?
Well, the finding that, or the explanation that we had given is that the proposed text amendments will implement the general plan goals and policies, including those aimed at preserving affordable housing in the community.
I'd just add, councilmember, consistency with the general plan is not one of the bases to deny a density bonus request. We don't have to, it doesn't have to be consistent with the general plan, it has to be consistent with the density bonus law, which is ministerial, so you don't have discretion to deny on the basis of general plan. The only discretion you have on a density bonus or a concession is that it would violate one of our written health and safety standards, like our building code or fire code, or those types of uniform codes.
Okay, I appreciate the clarity, but can you show the slide again where you showed the findings?
Yes, and this is just the findings to make to change the zoning code to employ density bonus. Yes.
Isn't that referenced in the general plan in there?
Yes. Yes, hold on.
Okay, that's what I'm referring to.
I see what you're referring to, but I think the change to the zoning code has to be consistent with our general plan. It doesn't make the density bonus law discretionary, and so that was, the impetus for this was putting decisions in front of the city council where you really can't, you really have to say yes, and we put you in that position several times.
Yeah, I always look for a reason. I can say no at times, too, so.
And there really isn't a reason to say no, so why put you in that position?
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time finding the correct item to share.
Cynthia, don't worry, I got the answer from City Attorney Larkin.
Thank you, councilmember Spring. Councilmember McKay?
Thank you, Assistant City Attorney Hassan. Great to kind of see you there. So I have a simple question, and that is that since these things have now become ministerial, can we still get a report at the council so that we know when these actions are being taken so that we can continue to kind of keep an eye on things? I know that we can't control them the way we would like to, but certainly knowing that they're coming forward would help us maybe open a dialogue with the developers, maybe we can be as convincing as possible, and I hope that in some way we can find incentives, meaningful incentives that we can provide to a builder to help keep these things more like we want them built in Morgan Hill, because we've apparently lost most of that control. I just want to see that come forward in a timely manner.
I'm sorry, you're asking how we would share that with you. So the projects that come forward have project pages, and so typically, everything that occurs of this nature would be posted on the project page. But certainly, we're open to consideration of any other process that you think would be helpful.
Something, if we could have the announcement made, or I'm not sure if that would come under the city manager's announcements, but some way for us to know when these things are moving through the process, and just a way to inform the community in a little bit more broad manner.
We can take that direction, councilmember, especially if that's something that the council wants to add to a motion to approve, then we can take that as direction to, I don't think it needs to go into the ordinance itself, but we can take it as direction.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember McKay. Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Cynthia, thank you for your report. I'm not sure if this would be a question for you or for Ms. Garcia, but I'm curious to learn about, it says here, "Chapter 18.48 is enacted by the ordinance number 2277, 2018, required that the city council grant the density bonus and one or more concessions or incentives." It then goes on to talk about how it's increasingly difficult to die in standards that we just talked about. What, it says one or more, so are we able to decide we want to approve one and one only concession? Do we get to choose whether it is incentives, waivers, or reductions in development? And I'm also curious to know which is the most common request that we see?
It is not up to us. It depends on the number of affordable units that they are providing within their project. So, and it depends on the percentage, and so if it's 100% affordable, they are entitled to four incentive or concessions. The waiver- incentive or concessions. The waivers and reduction in standards are unlimited as long as they relate to being providing housing. And
I'm sorry, you said the incentives are four. The waivers and reductions are unlimited.
Yes. Yes, and it is not up to us to choose that. It is up to the developer who requests it.
And so we have to grant that?
Yes, unless, unless you can make the finding of the specific adverse impact.
So if they had a laundry list of reductions and waivers, we would have, we would have nowhere without to examine those?
That is correct. We have a, we have a burden of proof to demonstrate other than a finding that it would create a specific defined written safety standard. We would otherwise have to prove by proponents of the evidence that the waivers aren't necessary or concessions aren't necessary to build the affordable housing. And that's an impossible standard to meet.
Aren't necessary to the financial?
They don't reduce the cost of the affordable housing. And so it's, it's an almost impossible burden to meet in just about every case.
I see. Thank you. Could somebody tell me what is the most common request that we got?
I don't have somebody there from Development Services who can maybe answer.
Yes, Jennifer Carmen, Development Services Director is making her way up to the podium, and we'll share a response to that.
It's been a long time since I've done this. Really, any concession or waiver to our objective standards, and those range from the gamut. Most common is height, other design elements, but I'm sure we'll see more varied decisions or requests as time goes on.
Thank you for that clarification. I have, thank you, Mayor Protam.
Councilmember? I think I, all my councilmembers made a comment. Am I correct? Councilmember Spring? So I would like to ask Cynthia if she could pull up an adverse impact, you know, spell that out one more time. What, what would you say that adverse impact would be? Can you give an example of that?
I think the most straightforward example would be something that violates the fire code. For example, a road width that's too narrow, that will not allow fire access to a building that's three or four, five feet, five stories tall. Another one would be a flood issue. For example, a project that's not wanting to comply with the flood issue or the flood requirements and would result in flooding and neighboring properties or the subject property itself.
Thank you. Would an impact to the surrounding community be an adverse effect?
It has to be a specific adverse effect that cannot be mitigated in any way. So it would be very difficult to have an instance to deny a project based on just a community impact as a whole. It must be related to the project itself and the project that are the impacts that it's causing.
Like, as Ms. Hassan said, if it's going to cause runoff, it's going to flood the neighborhood. Specific adverse impact. Or if it was going to prevent fire access from the neighboring buildings, that would be a specific adverse impact. Impacts on communities we can consider. But if it's just a generic, more people or more cars or less parking, those types of impacts are not specific safety impacts that.
Right. And also to follow up, I think on a comment that Dawn had made earlier is that it must be an impact based on objective identified written public health and safety standards. So it would have to be something that violates a written public health and safety standard as well.
Cynthia, that's all the questions I have. And I guess as elected officials, we can thank the Senate bills that take away our local control from making any decisions. So at this time, if there's no more questions on that, I would like to go to the public for any comments, questions.
We have Mr. Berenowski.
Yes, good evening again. My name is Joe Berenowski. Yeah, I wasn't planning on coming on this. I hadn't even looked at it, but I was listening to the discussion. And I am glad that eventually he got from, well, practically impossible to what I think the code actually says, which was kind of the last comment. I happen to have this on my phone because I was thinking about this a long time ago. As using this paragraph, specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies or conditions as they exist on the date the application was deemed complete. And I do not support this. Just because we have not identified every single possible condition that might be adverse, doesn't mean that we can't. And I specifically, when I looked at this a long time ago, I want to be somewhat careful here because it was hard to find the exact details. But I believe the city of Berkeley used a traffic condition, a traffic impact condition to deny a concession based on their policies that did identify an objective public health issue. And I'm also sitting here thinking about the election that's coming up. I mean, everyone knows that each candidate is saying they're going to look at what we can do to get some local control back. So we're saying, well, we only have five meetings. Well, so we're getting it to administrative. We're not going to use the meetings. That's not an excuse. So I just think that the city determined for themselves that there's absolutely no way that some project may have an adverse impact just because maybe that standard doesn't exist today. And we have the freedom to define those and to look at those. It's not like if we don't have it written today, then we can't imply them forever. It's on the date that the application, some future application was submitted. I don't think this is a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Berenowski. Deputy Clerk, is there any more members of the public that want to speak on this matter?
I have no more speakers, sir.
How about online?
I have no hands up online either.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I believe we, we need a council to move to waive the first and second reading of the ordinance. Am I correct, Deputy City Clerk? So, council, may I have a motion? Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I first, I actually have a comment or question. We'll still see the projects, correct? I mean, we're just adopting the ordinance. We'll still have a chance to look at the projects. And if there is something that we can identify that we do feel could qualify, we would still have that opportunity?
Projects would rarely come to you unless they meet the criteria to come to city council. Most, many of the projects are ministerial and would be handled either at the admin level or at the planning commission level.
So they would only come to us, what you're saying is that they would still come to us if there was an appeal made?
If there's an appeal and any, any project that requests a zoning amendment or general plan amendment as well would always come to you, of course. And projects that were be considered extraordinary developments, I believe, still come to city council. But
Let me, councilmember, the only, the only changes that you won't be seeing these density bonus approvals. And those usually come to you as a standalone approval, independent of any design review or other approvals that the council would normally do. So those are the only, that's the only change is you won't be seeing these density bonus approvals. Unless there's, unless there's a recommendation to deny the approval, in which case then the developer could appeal to that all the way to the city council.
That's what I was going to ask you. Is there a way that we could continue? We would just be, what it mean to then deny recommending the ordinance if we wanted to see, continue to see those projects?
If you wanted those density bonuses, if you wanted density bonus projects to come to you for approval, then yes, you would have to, you could, you could make a motion to amend the proposed ordinance to remove that section and still approve the rest. Or you could ask us to come back with a revised ordinance that doesn't include that, or you can make some change to that. That's, those are your options are really tonight are to approve it, deny it, or ask just to remove that one section.
Prepare to make a motion?
Okay, yes.
I would like to, wait a first and second reading of the ordinance. I would like to move that we do omit that piece so that we can see the density bonus projects and have them come to council.
I'll second it. Can I add a comment as well? The, the, my understanding, though, is regardless of whether or not that is in, if I as a council member see a project going through a pipeline, I can request it to come to in front of city council, no matter what it is, correct?
If it's a ministerial decision like density bonus, if it's removed from, right now, our ordinance said, the only reason it comes to council now is our ordinance says they're going to come to council. And that worked when they were rare. Now every project, pretty much that comes forward because we have inclusionary housing ordinance is entitled to some sort of concession or bonus. So pretty, what it means is that every housing project, just about, that's more than four units, is going to come to you for a ministerial approval. So, so, but you don't get an opportunity to call those up. Otherwise, the only reason, because they're ministerial approvals, the only reason they come to you right now is that the ordinance says they do.
Okay, I'll take it offline with you on my question, but I think it's okay to, to, to do what was suggested, not just because of me or us here, but also really to raise the awareness in the community and to, for the public to speak up if they want, especially the neighborhoods often, they want to know. And if it just, those approvals just go, I completely understand where staff is coming from. But if they're just done by staff, it's probably unlikely that the neighborhoods will hear about it on time and then get noticed to speak. And just that by, that by itself is worth for me that additional meeting. And I'm realistic enough to know it will be almost impossible to say no to them. But at least we still can at least raise our opinions and concern to.
Just a point of clarification, these will still be noticed to all of the neighbors. That is still included.
Understood, yes.
Right. Even if it's acted on at the development services level. And then, and then a hearing can be requested and held if it's, if it's asked for by one of the people who received notice.
Thank you, Cynthia. Councilmember McKay?
Yeah, thank you. This, the most, this motion actually expands on what I was asking staff if we could do earlier, which is basically let the public know what's going on with these. Is there a way to do this so that it's more of like, like we do in an architectural review? We actually, we, we look at it, we take public comment, we make our comments. And that's fully understand that we're not actually the decision-making body at that time. That this is just for review because it's, you know what, we've been through a few of these and we've heard the discussions. And if we could eliminate the part of discussion that says, you know, let's, let's stop this. Because if it's ministerial and it's already been approved, then, you know, we're spending a lot of time basically arguing over something that, that we can't win. But I think that we should be able to express our opinions. I think the community should hear what we're saying. They should have a say in it too. They, we should hear what they're saying so we know their concerns are. But I don't want to turn it into a, an argument that, that really has no true meaning. If there's a way to do that, I completely agree with, we should let the community know. We should know these things are coming through the pipeline. And that's it. Thank you.
And then, council, that's, that's your process now. They go on consent. The only issue, they go on consent just for identification. Only issue now is that they are routinely pulled from consent by council members in disgust. So, but otherwise, it's exactly what you propose.
And if I may, right now, we seek approval of the item, but what we could do is just do it as a report that would just be to accept and to file the report. That would be, I would imagine, the other option.
Okay, thank you. That, that's the direction I would like to go. Again, if I can make a friendly amendment to your motion, that's, that's really all I want to do is just, let's get that report. Let's get it in front of the community.
So, Councilmember Martinez Beltran, do you accept that amendment to your motion?
I would love to, but I don't, I'm, I'm not going to. And it's only because I, I see where you're coming from, Councilmember McKay, and I agree. But I do think that we, we really kind of are the stopgap. We are the, we are the deciding body with whatever decision decision-making power that we do have, which we don't have much, as we've just discussed, we have very little at this point. But I do think that we should continue to do that because I don't want us to, you know, give the inclination to the public that there is, there is no case where they could come forward and make a case where there are adverse effects because we've just heard that they can be made. So I think we are also learning, as this has changed, we're learning what our parameters are and, you know, and it's a tough lesson to learn. But I think that it's important for us to continue having them come through city council. And if there is, if there is an issue that somebody, a member of the public would like to talk, and it does warrant some of the, you know, the requirements that we've seen here, and it violates an objective safety standard or what have you, that we would be able to hear it then. So that's the only reason that I want, I'd like to go ahead and stay with that.
So if I could just, I will accept that. I think the main reason is because let's see it in action, then maybe there comes a time when we decide we don't need to continue with it in that format.
And I think that's, I agree with you. I agree with you. Maybe we need to just learn how, you know, as we're getting used to this new, this new laws. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmembers. So I, I have a kind of a, a question. What adverse effect will this have if we make this amendment to this ordinance? And if I recall my memory and Jennifer's explanation of, I think it's SB 35, this, this will affect the five-meeting rule?
Exactly. That's it. That's the, there's the two negative reasons that we brought this forward. The one, it means that you're going to see a lot more of these, which if they stay on consent, that shouldn't be an issue. If every single one becomes a public hearing, it will mean meetings are longer. And two, it's one of the five here, we're only allowed to have five hearings on any development project, and that includes public meetings. So what that means is this is one of them. If this is the fifth, then everything else after that is deemed approved, and it doesn't go to anybody.
And to add to that, we've had, in certain circumstances, projects that we couldn't have a public hearing because we've already hit that five.
Okay, so I guess, you know, again, we're in a tight situation here. It's a double-edged sword. So
I have another question. Is there a reason that we couldn't, if you're on your fourth meeting, we couldn't just have that come to council? So the density bonus comes usually six months to a year prior to any other sort of meetings related to SEQA or project analysis. And so that timing wouldn't work a couple like that.
Okay. Discussion closed. So we have, I believe we have a first and a second, but we have an amendment. So could, could somebody tell us exactly what the amendment is?
So the amendment is to, so to introduce, sorry, the wrong spot. The amendment is to waive the first and second reading of the ordinance. And then I think what we would do is have the council vote on that. And then we will incorporate the changes requested by councilmember Martinez Beltran into the second part, which is where you actually introduce the ordinance. And so why don't you, I would suggest you vote on waiving the first and second reading first, and then I'll reiterate what I think the next motion would be.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don. So councilmembers, can I have a, a motion to waive the first and second reading of the ordinance?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Deputy City Clerk, could you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Borzili.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez Beltran. McKay.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So deputy city clerk, so could you introduce the ordinance as recommended by staff in the planning with the amendment? I'm sure Mr. Walken is going to kind of do that for us.
Yeah, and that, that would be, I'll take that as your motion if there's a second for that.
I'll second that.
And then, so the, the motion as it is, is to introduce the ordinance with the exception that we are going to strike the, I was trying to find the exact ones, the exact sections that we're planning on striking, but I believe it would be striking the amendments to 1848.7070 to, to have final approval of density bonuses and waivers and concessions, or density bonuses and concessions, because that's all that gets approved, approved by the city council.
Right. And I will also need to revise section 18.48.080 because that provided for public notice and a development services director holding the public hearing upon request. So I would revise that one as well.
So that, so the motion would be with, approve the ordinance with those two edits.
Thank you.
Okay. So then I, I need a motion?
I, I move, yeah.
So deputy city clerk, a roll call?
I will read the title and do a roll call.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Morgan Hill and the need section 14.04.040, general requirements in section 14.04.0.060, continued affordability and city review of occupancy of chapter 14.04 Inclusionary Housing of Title 14 Housing. To clarify inclusionary housing regulations and enacting chapter 18.48 Density Bonus of Title 18 Zoning of the Municipal Code of the City of Morgan Hill Regarding Granting of Density Bonus Incentives, Concessions, and Waivers or Reduction of Development Standards for Housing Projects That Include Affordable Units As Required by State Law AB 1763. Mayor Protem Borzili. Our councilmembers Martinez Beltran.
Aye.
McKay. Thank you.
So before I move on, I, I promised to take a short break and release the civics high schooler. I do apologize that I'm a couple minutes late from my eight o'clock mark. I hope you don't mind. And then again, if you can go to Kim in the back and, and get the certificate that you were here, I would appreciate it. And again, thank you for attending the city council meeting. I, I really appreciate that. And so I'd like to do a 10-minute recess at this particular time. May I have the council back and order in the chambers, please? Thank you. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is other business, number five, except Morgan Hill Tourism Business Improvement District Owners Association Annual Report, the DBA Visit Morgan Hill. So I'd like to open a public comment. Oh, no, we do a presentation first. I'm sorry. Sorry, Krista.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, city council members, city staff and community. I'm Krista Ruff, the executive director of Visit Morgan Hill. And it is wonderful to be here in person and see your faces. I'm here tonight to submit to you the annual report for the fiscal year of July 2021 to June 2022. And in addition to the written report submitted in your packet, I have prepared a summary of the work that our organization has been doing. First, I'd like to acknowledge our board of directors. I'm incredibly grateful to have an engaged, talented and supportive group providing critical strategic direction and guidance for the organization through the wonderful adventure that was launching during a global pandemic. I believe we have our board chair here virtually with us, Mr. Michael Meredith. And then we also have Ms. Edith Ramirez and Chris Gione here. They are our secretary and our treasurer, respectively. So thanks to our wonderful board members and many others in the community. Visit Morgan Hill was established in 2019. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit destination marketing organization, or DMO. And we also manage the Morgan Hill T-Bid. So for anyone who might not know what a T-Bid is, this is a tourism business improvement district. It is, it has evolved from the bid model that was started in the early 90s. And there are over 90 of these tourism business improvement districts around cities, counties, regions within California. Morgan Hill T-Bid assesses hotel stays less than 30 days at 1.5%. The funds are distributed to the management organization, or in this case, Visit Morgan Hill. And then we use the funds to promote the city as a leisure, sports and event travel destination to create benefit for the assessed businesses and the overall local economy. So why tourism? Overnight visitors stay longer and spend more in a destination, creating additional local spending across verticals above and beyond what residents would spend alone. It also supports local employment, local jobs for local people. And it diversifies our public funding sources. So in terms of what, what this means in numbers, in Santa Clara County in 2021, $4 billion in travel spending was generated. That also generated $368 million in. That also generated 368 million in state and local taxes, and it employed 30,000 people in the county. So in terms of tourism as an opportunity for Morgan Hill, our city is well positioned to grow in this market. Hotel markets have been traditionally business travel heavy with little proactive development of other markets. The occupancy patterns show room for growth during the weekends and the off-season or shoulder seasons. And then we have existing visitor assets that are appealing to leisure markets, so wineries, restaurants, events. And these have actually been somewhat under marketed until Visit Morgan Hill was formed, marketed outside of the area for tourism specifically. So we verified these things through a strategic planning process in 2020. In our strategic plan, we identified three strategic priorities. And these priorities are, one, leisure awareness, bringing light to Morgan Hill and all that it has to offer to attract visitors from a variety of different markets. And people need to know about Morgan Hill before they can make the decision to visit. So awareness was a big one for us. The second priority is sports and private event development. We have many facilities that can accommodate group events, sporting events, festivals. And we know that those have a high yield for hotels. The third priority is public events and product development. This is about collaborating within Morgan Hill with our other local organizations and regionally to enhance our existing assets and also attract new ones that appeal to visitors. So things like new events, new venues, new facilities and businesses. So how do we put these priorities into action? We know that 90% of travelers research online and 82% will actually complete their booking online. So to be competitive and put Morgan Hill on the map in a tourism context, we must have a digital presence. We do that through marketing communications. So this is creating and maintaining consumer awareness through a suite of marketing channels, content and promotions. And we also engage in business development. This is about relationship building and generating leads for Morgan Hill facilities, venues and room blocks. And we leverage industry relations. So this is again partnering with the other Morgan Hill organizations to develop tourism and the things that attract it. So because we launched during such a tumultuous time, I wanted to take a moment and look back at what we've achieved over the last few years. In 2020, we completed that strategic plan. We developed a brand and implemented that brand. That enabled us to build up our website and our content as well as the channels that were pushing our content through. So that was happening more in 2021. And then that was a solid foundation for our brand launch campaign. So that started last July. We launched a very comprehensive digital campaign. And then in 2022, we did phase two of that campaign. And we further developed our content strategy and are trying to maximize our ongoing marketing. So although I have the report in your packet of our activities and improvements, I put together a brief 45-second video just to run through some of those things a little more visually. Okay, so I know that you just had a lot of words and pictures flashed. So what are the results of these? What are we trying to get out of all of this stuff? So getting eyes onto Morgan Hill through our social media promotions, advertising and SEO is critical to building awareness and attracting visitors. Our digital campaign garnered eight million impressions and was our agency's top performer. We also won an award for that. We also ran a commercial on KSBW8 that garnered 570,000 impressions. So that is all about attracting, getting new eyes on Morgan Hill. Our website is the next step in terms of interest where we provide viewers value through our information and content. So they're looking for something specific. They're taking the next step and making a decision in their travel decision-making journey. We captured 150,000 website visits, making up 222,000 page views, which was over a 600% increase year over year. Our website predominantly features local hotels, restaurants, wineries, parks, farms and retail, as well as special content like blog features and our popular event calendar, which again features local businesses and our other partner organizations. Visitors research dozens of webpages and take a nonlinear path to making a travel purchase. But what we can measure in terms of conversions are direct referrals to our local partners. We sent 28,000 clicks to Morgan Hill Hotels, Restaurants, Wineries, et cetera. And we also received 120 online requests for information. About half of those were event venue leads and the other half were more informational requests about events and the like. Another thing that we look at is the monthly T-Bid performance. While this is influenced by macroeconomics, it is a good barometer for what is happening at the local hotel level. Here, we see the blue and orange lines. We have the persistent lows from 2020 to mid-2021 due to the pandemic. After some late summer peaks in 2021, we see the typical softening over the winter period. And that was intensified by the lingering pandemic impact. A distinct increase in April 2022 was due to three major sporting events and a corporate group, which drove up the hotel rates and occupancy. And so we can see the impact that has. I know that the numbers on the left aren't huge increments, but you can see how it impacts our T-Bid. We also had some recovery of business travel and pent-up demand for wedding groups through the summer. So while we saw year-over-year growth, the entire state's travel industry is still lagging the pre-pandemic peak. But Visit Morgan Hill is working to build our visitor markets to support and advance our recovery. So with that, I hope that this presentation was helpful and brought some light to the 19-page report that you got. And if you or anyone here or watching from home haven't seen our website, please take a look. There's a lot of helpful information for both locals and visitors. So that concludes my report.
So any of my colleagues would... Okay, I think Councilmember Spring, you were first. Yes?
I don't know. I didn't pay attention.
I think you were.
Right, I'm closest, yes. Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you for your report. You know, I think I asked it last time too. What I'm always wondering is, how do we measure the impact of the campaigns? You're doing a lot. And yes, you track all the clicks and so on, and that's kind of a little bit retroactively. But how do you translate that into return of investment? And how do you determine that whatever campaign you did actually brought the results you were hoping for? How do you measure the results, the return of investment?
Well, you know, the metrics in the report are one thing. Those are the immediate thing that we can see. But I think when we look at the T-Bid and year-over-year, it's going to be long-term. So we can see the short-term impact with those metrics. But what we hope to see is that by adding new markets, we're going to see an increase in the T-Bid. That's the most direct metric to inform if what we're doing is working. And it is a long-term strategy, building awareness and also simultaneously developing Morgan Hill as a destination. It's really going to take some time. It doesn't happen overnight. So what we look at, we're benchmarking right now. We just started, and we will continue looking at those same numbers. And there's a lot more data and research I can pull if you would ever like to talk through something more specific.
Yeah, actually, I am. I am a data person engineered by trade, right? And everything that's happening in the world now is data-driven, right? No matter what the industry. And I'm sure it's no different in the industry you're in. But you know, if I click on whatever campaign you did and Renee clicks on it, Renee never gets a response probably nowadays. Why not? Or would Renee get a response from Visit Morgan Hill? Hey, Renee, you clicked, and we would like to have you come and stay overnight, and here's a 10% coupon. Are we doing any of that that is kind of, for me, in a context of customer relationship management?
So the transactions, when it comes to booking a hotel or going out to eat in a restaurant, it's not a linear process. So if someone sees an ad for Morgan Hill, it's more at that higher level of the funnel. And then we provide that pathway directly to the business. The other thing we contend with is that online travel agencies are putting a lot of money into capturing that online search. So in order for individual destinations to compete with that, they would need astronomical budgets. So, you know, we aren't currently doing any coupon deals or anything like that. We do consult with our hotels about offering specials around different events that are taking place. But it really lies, you know, with what the hotels want to implement in terms of discounts.
But, and I understand that part. I'm really curious, you know, with... Obviously, you get a lot of clicks, which is good, right, and attention. But what do you do with it, right? And how do you follow up, if you follow up? And if you don't follow up, I think it's a huge missed opportunity. There's a reason why someone clicked, but if nothing happens, then... Often at home, if I click something on my iPad, five minutes later, Alexa gives me some hints, right? And so someone is watching me and what I'm doing. And I'm not saying I want you to do that at home. But I think you should be doing it with people who react to your campaign and really work with the data that are given. And I don't know if your board has given you any direction, but I think this is the future. You have to work with data.
Yeah, I would be happy to discuss this more with you. You know, when we talk about something being clicked, it could be a multitude of things. So whether it's an ad in a campaign, you might get retargeted from clicking that ad. So or if you're just clicking something on the website, you might go directly to another website or you click through and ask us something through our contact us form. But I would be happy to talk more with you about it. I'd love to answer your questions more specifically.
Okay, I'll take you up on your offer often. My last question is related. Do you track any social metrics? Do you know who primarily is looking into it? And I haven't seen the data. Where are the people coming from? Are they young, old, local, regionally, from Europe? I don't know.
Yeah, we have a lot of that. And annually, when we do our budget and work plan, we just did it this first year because we're just starting to benchmark. But we did a whole market report for the board. So that's where we dove into who our audience is. We have really specific metrics available through the social media. So I can probably forward that to you easily, so you can see some of that. But what we are seeing on social media currently is, I think it's just kind of reflective of very vague demographics. It's 70% women are following us, 30% men, and then mostly in the local region. But we are building up in San Francisco, Sacramento. Those are kind of our drive markets. So that's just a very high-level response to your question.
Thank you. I'd love to... And if okay with the board, I think it would be great to share that with the council. And I probably will have follow-up questions offline and next time you come back.
Great.
Thank you for all you do.
Back to Councilmember Spring. I believe Councilmember Martinez Beltran was next.
Thank you. Hi, Krista. Great to see you. Thank you, Councilmember Spring. That was an excellent question, the last question, and I really enjoyed getting that feedback. So I too would be interested to just know, who is it that finds Morgan Hill is the destination that they want to visit? I love the video that you showed. I want to go there. I know it's a family destination, maybe not with the kids, but I do want to go there. I wondered if you could tell me a little bit about you on your presentation. And as you were speaking, you talked about three sporting events and a corporate group. Could you share with us what those sporting events were and who that group was?
Yeah, so one was a soccer tournament. The other two were swim meets, so they were kind of back-to-back. It was the Far Westerns and the Masters Swim Meets. And those, I think, each had at least 1,000 people.
Wow, okay. And how about the corporate group?
That was an agricultural group, yeah.
Okay. And were those all happening during the summer?
Those were all, I believe, the beginning of April.
The beginning of April, okay.
Yeah.
So the reason I'm asking you that, Krista, is because just happens to be on this agenda that we're looking at the Sports Center Master Plan. And so I would like to know, while you're here with us, this great resources that we have, what do you see as the opportunity there for us? Everybody has their perspective, and I'm very interested to hear what yours is, since this is what you're doing all day and every day.
I think, just kind of answering candidly, I think enhancing what we have is important, but also building up what is around it, the amenities. You know, the sports center as it is is a little bit isolated out there. There's not a lot around it. So something that, you know, families could enjoy when their kid is not in the match or whatever, swimming or soccer, lacrosse, et cetera. So I think augmenting what we have is important, but also looking at what's around there also. Another thing that I might mention is that when there are more than one event, kind of stacking on top of one another, that does affect the availability and inventory for people coming in. So it's good. It drives rates up. But then it makes it more complicated, you know, in terms of finding your preference. Yeah, your preferred accommodation.
Okay, okay, great. If you're looking at the sports center and, you know, you've got your choice between soccer fields or cricket or volleyball or swimming, what have you seen demand for, the most demand for?
I mean, soccer is obviously number one there. But what we see are a lot of the local districts, you know, not as many external events. We have some, but I do know that the sports facility does have to balance that. They're local and outside users. But I would say it's not as much about which sport. I think that our fields are very flexible and they allow lots of different kinds of sports. But also, you know, enhancing the infrastructure in terms of the Wi-Fi or, you know, broadcast capabilities or just upping the level a little bit so that we can get those bigger... so that we can get those bigger or semi pro type of tournaments.
Okay, great. This is fantastic. I don't know who on staff organized and orchestrated this. They're so brilliant, but this is great. I also wanted to, you know, ask about about the clicks. You said there were 30,000 people employed by this. This that was in the county, okay? And where where do you see us going now, the opportunity for growth and what's on the horizon? You came to us in a very difficult time. We were in COVID, I think, when you had just come on. You've done a fantastic job, by the way. I I know that it's probably been very challenging. But can you can you give us a snapshot? I saw the phase one, the phase two. Where are we? Where are we going now?
Yeah, so the continuation of that 2020, 2021, 2022, what we want to work on next is our public relations and getting earned media coverage. That is kind of the the type of coverage where they measure it in terms of advertising equivalency. So, you know, we don't have the budget to do another really big campaign like that this fiscal year. But we are looking to to earn more recognition for Morgan Hill in that publication space. So I think what we're doing is good. We just have to keep doing it. Like the question Rene had, you know, it's it's a longer term thing. We need to keep a presence and and keep doing campaigns and keep getting in front of new eyes because the opportunity is to build the market that we've never had. So we're just at the baby steps of that.
Okay, and switching over to our wine industry. Our neighbor to the south, Gilroy, has just as much riches in wineries as we do. Well, you know, I know that we're starting to work together there. What is, what do you think that that's going to take so that we can really be able to create a Sonoma, create? I mean, that's what we have to be thinking and see it so that it realizes. You know, how, what do you think that that's going to take investment wise? And what do you think that's going to take collaboration wise? And how far away are we?
So for the wineries, you probably know they do have their own wineries association. So our Santa Clara Valley Wine Region is a shared region. It's it's Gilroy up to Saratoga. And, you know, they, we have the type of wineries that are, you know, they're they're smaller. They're not producing a ton like some of the other bigger wine regions are. But I do think there is room to gain more recognition for this wine region, which again is going to take the marketing, the public relations, and that takes funding. So, you know, I think that we have been good strategic partners with the wine region. We do partner with them and promote events as well as the ongoing music on the wine trail. But, you know, it's it might not be for me to say, you know, what what it's going to take because I think it's ultimately up to the the region and and their leadership and and the winery owners, you know, what they want. So is the board talking about, for example, you have funds that are coming in through the T bid, using a percentage of that and coupling that with the Santa Clara County Wine Association, and coupling that with Gilroy's version of Visit Morgan Hill, so that we have some pot that we can work collaboratively with some funds behind it? Has there been any discussion on the board about that? You know, I think that there was, early on during the pandemic, I think things were kind of easing up and we started to talk to Gilroy about a collaborative promotion. And I think that's something we have always wanted to do. And it has really just been a matter of getting ourselves and our organization, Visit Morgan Hill, up to speed, getting our funding stable, getting things open regularly. So, you know, at this point, we aren't discussing anything concrete, but it is something that has been in the plan, so to speak, since we started.
Okay, great. Well, I I would certainly encourage, I know that the Wine Association is working on some of those efforts. So but thank you. Thank you so much for bringing all of this. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McKay?
Great report. Always good to see an update. I have to say that this is this is something near and dear to many of us here in the room. This is something, I think, 2012, we actually got together and started talking about, 2013, we actually had a community forum on tourism that I really think kicked things off. And so we we developed the Morgan Hill Tourism Alliance, many are here in the room. But one of the key things was that in that group, three or four of the basic leaders of that effort were wineries. And this whole effort was actually born with wineries in mind. And to this day, they're still in the DNA of Visit Morgan Hill. One of the board members is a winery owner, operator. That's Gene Villamo. So this is something that we've been working on, as you know, for many, many years. And and I'm proud to say that we have seen, you know, basically through just the great efforts of really good quality wines, we've seen their recognition grow and grow. And it's been a wonderful collaborative relationship between Gilroy and the winers of Santa Clara Valley, and now Morgan Hill is starting to step in and and put some more effort into it. But again, like you said, it's really up to the Wine Association to really lead that charge. And we should do everything we can to help with that, including this weekend, there's an event, Blind to Wine, which I helped create last year, which is going to be great up at Mountain Winery. Hopefully people can make it to that. So going back all those years, what I always said, and I think many of us always said, is just get them here once. Once they get here, they will see what we have and they'll want to come back. So and I appreciate everything you've been doing. Obviously, I've been watching, which been doing very closely, bringing the influencers in. I just think that that's a really, you know, a nice 21st century approach. I also remember that I met you the week before we went into COVID lockdown, basically. And so you've never had a a good running start at anything. You've always been back on your heels. And the entire organization has been very accommodating and has developed the the work plan and strategy around knowing that, you know, digging out of a hole, basically, and that you don't really know what the future looks like, and it's hard to plan for that. So those are some comments. Now, the questions, the outdoor sports center, and thank you, that was a good question. I was gonna have similar questions. So you asked, I think, the right questions about the outdoor sports center. They've always been the low hanging fruit, just with the visibility, tens of thousands of people on any given weekend. Do you have a good, solid presence with Visit Morgan Hill now? Are are we taking advantage? Is that low hanging fruit picked?
Yeah, the signage that we created in the report, we have portable signage that can be wheeled between the Aquatic Center and Outdoor Sports Center, depending where there's activity. Those have QR codes, so someone can click through and and find the restaurant listings, et cetera. And then we also installed signage in the kiosks. So that's just kind of when you say low hanging fruit, that that's kind of as, you know, analog as you can get, I guess, besides the QR code. But yeah, that that is something they're here, of course, you know, but once they're here, we've we've already got them here. But we put the imagery in front of them. Maybe the next tournament, they're going to stay an extra day. So yes, we we are trying to get in front of them as well.
Right. Does that include any kind of map of the region so people know where the downtown is, where the wineries are, where up where things are?
Yeah, you know, deep within the content of our website, there are maps. We link to the downtown map. We also link to a Choose Morgan Hill downtown map in different locations. We have the wine map also on the wine page, and we have our own location map.
Okay, thank you. You've been doing a great job. Now, tough question, but what can we, as a council, continue to do to support Visit Morgan Hill?
It is a tough question.
We, I know we can't throw money at you. You're you're funded by the the T bid, but what, you know, what can we do? Can we just obviously go everywhere we go? We just sing the praise?
Well, I I think you're doing it now, you know, by by listening to our reports and, you know, checking in to see how our progress is going. And if needs arise, then you would be able to know about them. You know, I think that just, one, is just educating and kind of immersing in what we're doing and getting more familiar with it. Because it's so extensive, it's really hard to encapsulate in a 10 minute presentation. So there is a wealth of knowledge and information and facts and numbers that that I can probably access pretty easily if you ever have a question that comes up. But I think that, you know, tourism can be a bad word sometimes. I know the town I grew up in, we didn't like tourists. They came and invaded our town and we wanted them to leave. But, you know, we're not in that situation now, but we are in the situation where we can really develop tourism in a way that benefits and and suits our community. That was part of the beauty of taking this job. I was like, wow, what a great opportunity and the collaboration between the organizations. So, you know, we have the opportunity to develop tourism that is right for us instead of just organic, uncontrolled tourism that pops up and ends up being a problem later.
Great, great. I'm going to mention one thing that has been brought to my attention a few times recently, and that is, are we promoting our equestrian sport opportunities? I'm just leaving you with that.
I have a little section for them on our website and our sports section. So I do think there's opportunity there, and I know some of them have reached out on social media for some of their things. But, you know, part of that product development is creating more experiences for visitors. So a lot of the equestrian centers are more of a residential type of customer base, people that are live here and they're coming regularly. But maybe if there were some products like horseback tours, that would be something we could really, really support and and promote.
Okay, that, bicycle tours would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Those were really great questions. I, first of all, I I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Spring, about online programs. I think somehow marrying those with, if you go to this hotel, they have special special deals with a local restaurant. I don't know if you have that now, but I think I think really attacking the online programs, some discount, would be a phenomenal opportunity to get them, you know, if they're on the fence. But oh, I I have these opportunities at these restaurants to get a discount, whatever. I I think I I think that's might be a missed opportunity. So I I agree. How did you get those sporting events to come down? You know, like you did this and the swim. I mean, how did you, what grabbed them besides our field?
Well, yes, the facilities are are number one. I think that they did have a good roster of existing tournaments. The pandemic halted those for a while. And so there was pent up demand as soon as, you know, the gates opened and we were allowed to have things again. I think a lot of events wanted, they were eager to get their their groups back together. So, you know, the OSC handles the sales directly for the facility, the Aquatic Center. We do meet frequently, so between the city Parks and Rec, Aquatic Center, OSC, and Visit Morgan Hill, we do meet, we have a recurring meeting where we talk about what's coming up, what's on the calendar, what is, you know, any new business opportunities that we can try to try to win. And any kind of onsite things that, like signage or or any opportunities that we can do to enhance the facility. So, you know, those events, we worked collaboratively to get those swim meets. Visit Morgan Hill supported the city as well as the tournament organizer to get, you know, hotel room blocks and hotel quotes. So we supported in that way, and we did work with the tournament. We create a whole tournament page where the attendees can look at that and find what hotels to go to. So, you know, I would say that we don't have a full time, you know, sports sales department or person. But we do have our processes in place to try to close new business. And if I might just add, the other thing that helped was we had a new third party operator start. And part of that was capital investment, both by the city as well as the as the new operator. And so those capital improvements on the fields really were a nice incentive to have some of those organizations come back that had previously been at the facilities and they, you know, enjoyed seeing how things had been improved. That would help the events.
Thank you. My colleague also mentioned ROI. I know that's a tough one to figure out exactly. But I saw an interesting graph that you put up, and that's the the history graph. And and you had a big increase from March, really up until, well, it it ends in July. What was fascinating with this graph was I, on our budget, they have a graph very similar to this. And I asked, one of my questions to Christina before our meeting was, what's the year after revenue, sales revenue increase? And it came back with 14% sales increase. That's revenue increase. That's a a pretty nice increase. But what was interesting, that graph almost mirrors your graph. So there, I think there is a relationship between what you're doing and what we're actually seeing revenue wise. So I just wanted to make that point. I have no, all my questions will answer prior to the meeting. So thank you very much, Krista. So I would like to open this up, if it's okay with you, Krista, to the public for public comments. So I'm going to look to the deputy city clerk for anybody that wishes to talk.
I don't have any speaker cards or online members wishing to speak.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk. So at this particular time, then, I I think all we need to do is accept and file the Visit Morgan Hill annual report as a recommendation. And I I still think we need a vote on it, though, right? Am I correct? Yeah, to accept.
Yes.
So I'm going to look to my council members and for an action item.
Yeah, move to accept.
Second.
So Councilmember McKay made the first, and I think Councilmember Beltran made the second. So Deputy City Clerk, if you could do a roll call on that?
Mayor Potem Borjoli.
Aye.
Councilmembers Martinez, Beltran.
Aye.
McKay.
Aye.
Spring.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job.
Moving on to the next item, number six, accept the 2022 Public Health Goals Report on water quality. Anybody doing a presentation on that?
Yes, Mr. Sylvan is making his way up.
Okay.
Good evening, councilmembers, members of the public, and my teammates. As you are aware, City of Morgan Hill is a public utility retailer. And as such, we have to, we are required to report on our water quality on a, every three years. We do that by taking water samples and measure the contaminant levels within the drinking waters. So once we do that, we measure and compare those level to the State of California Public Health Goals. Those goals are set by the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. And, but the goals are not regulatory standards. So the re- the report was posted, uh, for public comments on our website, uh, since, uh, October 12th. And the comments that we receive are attached as supplement one and two. As evident in the report, Morgan Hill is one of the municipalities with the highest water quality. And our utility is in full compliance and with federal and state regulations. What we're here tonight is to ask you to first receive those comments, and second, accept and file the report with the State of California for City of Morgan Hill. With that, I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report. So I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for any questions. Uh, Councilmember McKay?
Okay, James, thank you. That was a great report. Nice and sweet and short. Um, so, um, I've I've already got the answer to this question, but I just want to make sure that if any of the public has looked at this, one of the, um, items that seems to be over the limit, I mean, virtually the only thing, um, with slightly over was lead.
Yes.
And could you give us a a brief explanation of how, why that's not, I think, as alarming as initially it might seem?
Uh, if you notice, uh, uh, that was the same thing the previous three years as well. And the reason for that, it's, uh, it's hard to pinpoint where we may have lead within the system, uh, with regard to our equipment components. Uh, so the approach that we are using to, uh, mitigate that is, uh, as we do replacement of equipment, or as we are installing new equipment, we are ensuring that those components are lead-free. Uh, that only address actually the issue. Uh, there's also lead, uh, equipment that may be in the home, not necessarily in the distribution system itself, but in the home. But I believe that the state is coming with regulations that will require the homes to remove uh, those, uh, components within a certain timeframe.
Okay. And the key thing there is the water is perfectly safe.
Uh, that is one of the best water, the cleanest water I have this I have ever seen.
Okay, that that's great to know. I'm going to ask a question. I don't know if you're going to be able to answer it, and that is, um, we travel a lot and I taste water. I have, um, a water softener and all that stuff. Can you make the water just taste a little better?
I think it tastes really good, but can it, can we improve on it? Uh, there's always that possibility.
Okay, just, you know, one of those things. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Councilman, thank you, Councilmember McKay. Uh, I I think Councilmember Martinez Beltran was next. Am I correct or no?
I don't, I don't know, and I'm.
That's fine. It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protown. Um, James, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Uh, I wanted to, I had the same question as Councilmember McKay, just for the public to understand that our water is safe. Um, but I did want to just ask, you know, it talks specifically about the MCL, uh, that it is a little bit over the limit for lead, as you've alluded to.
It's over the limit for the goal. For the MCL, we are within.
For the goal, that's, yes, correct. Thank you for that correction. I'm just wondering, is that, uh, I know you said that it's the cleanest water. Are others also, as far as lead, over the goal?
Uh, you referring to, when you said order, you.
Other city, other providers.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
In fact, uh, other municipality, you will have, uh, multiple, uh, contaminant, uh, uh, that are in the water.
Where we only have. Okay.
Morgan Hill.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Councilmember McKay, uh, Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, I haven't changed my name yet. And it's only nine twenty, so. So we'll manage, you know, it's. Uh, thank you for your report. Couple of questions. Do you know the, uh, I saw the report with all the data and then yes, the lead was the only one where uh, where we said yes in the last column, meaning we were above the goal. Uh, but don't know who, why that goal is set at that level and what that means with regards to is that healthy or not. I don't know. I assume it is. Uh, and I assume, uh, where we are is still healthy as well, but, uh, who 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 actually provides that report?
We do. You're talking about, uh,
We, we, the City of Morgan Hill.
The City of Morgan Hill generally.
We have our own lab.
Uh, we do not have our own lab, but we do contract with labs to do the testing.
Okay, i- i- is, is, do we get that independently verified by someone that, whatever data we use and provide, and some someone independent from the city is actually double checking?
Yes, that 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 will be the lab, uh, that we use. For all the reports that we do, uh, there is a lab, which is a third party that we.
Yeah, I didn't see that in the report, and the report doesn't state which lab it got provided by, uh, which triggers my question, uh, here. Uh, again, as as a council member and as a resident, I want to know that, uh, of course, my my trust in the city is high, but, uh, I learned trust but verify, right?
Yes, we do not have a lab, so we don't do the testing ourselves.
Okay.
We contract with a a lab.
And those are labs used by other agencies.
Those are lab, uh, yes, that are certified by.
Is there a reason why we don't mention the lab in the report that provide? Is there a reason why the la- name of the lab is not mentioned in the report?
Uh, I'm not sure why it's not mentioned, but, uh, I can verify it and see.
Yeah, could we maybe do that next time?
Sure.
The, uh, and and then I I understand we we could get the the lead number further down, including checking our homes. Uh, who do I ask to check?
Uh, you will do the the same step that we take. You will take a sample and get a lab that you uh, uh, want to contract with to do the testing for you.
Yeah, I I I wonder if, you know, maybe with the water bill or so, if if there's some tips. Another one tip I'm not fan of is is flushing the water for half a minute or so. Uh, when when we're saying we should save water, right? Uh, but but I I'd be curious, you know, especially some homes might want to know, is my my house clean? Uh, where do I send it in? What does that cost me? And 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 how do I do that? I think that would be a nice service.
Yeah, there's a, there's a whole list of, uh, labs that provide that type of service. Uh, they just need to be certified by the state, licensed and certified by the state to do that type of work. And, uh, you can call one of those lab and they will come to your house, take a sample.
Yeah, but bear with me. I am not the expert like you. I I I just live here. Uh, and 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 I I wonder where I go and 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 I don't want to Google it. I want our city to give us the advice, the the same advice we give, how to plant, uh, outside our our homes. Uh, well, how do I test, uh, the water in my house? And where do I go?
They can, they can always call me.
All right, yeah. Can you please mention your phone number right now? Just kidding. Uh, but I think that would be a a a suggestion I'm throwing in here to benef- uh, to build upon what we're doing. And and I think it was also Mr. Mu- Muirhead who asked in his public comment, uh, uh, what 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 exactly, I assume it's the city, is the city putting in our water to clean it up?
Well, uh, as far as, uh, uh, disinfection, uh, like I said before, our water is extremely clean. The only thing that we add, we add to our water is chlorine, a twelve point five percent. That's it. The water doesn't require anything else.
Right, but that's the same that we put in the swimming pool too, right? And and but then you don't drink it. Swimming pool water, right? So so I I I, how much do we put in or so? And can we disclose that information?
Well, that's what I just disclosed, that twelve point five percent on dilution.
Right now you did, but I didn't see it in the report, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
It is, uh, maybe Mr. Gillian wants to mention, uh, a little bit more detail, but we do send out a water quality report to all of our, um, addresses, and I believe it's each year that discusses this. Every July that discusses the safety of our water and why our community can have the full faith that it is healthy water.
And that is.
Where does it go out to? So that's provided in the utility bills, and so if somebody opts to have electronic delivery, it's one of the attachments that you would get through email.
And it is online on our website.
I admit, I don't even look at that anymore because I do it on online pay and I I look at the amount. And not that on the attachment, maybe maybe that's, uh, something we need to think through, right? We want, we want to go, uh, get away from paper, but then we provide the information on paper, right? So how do we solve that? I I think I got my answers. I appreciate your report. Thank you so much.
Councilmember, um, at this time, um, uh, my questions were answered prior to the meeting, so I'm going to just open this up to any uh, public, um, comment. Um, Deputy City Clerk, do we have anybody available to speak on this matter from the public?
No, sir.
From the online?
No, sir.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk. Um, so what I would like to do is, um, give it back to my council members to, um, make a a motion to receive, uh, to accept and file the June twenty twenty-two Public Health Goals Report on Water Quality for the City of Morgan Hill. So can I ask for a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, so we have a, um, a motion from Councilmember Spring, a second from Councilmember Martinez Beltran. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protown Borjoli.
Aye.
Councilmembers Martinez Beltran.
Aye.
Aye.
Spring.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to, uh, item number seven, we're getting there. Um, it, uh, to introduce an ordinance of the City of Morgan Hill amending chapters um, in the building code and electrical code. So, um, I'm going to, um, ask at this time to, um, we could do one of two things. We could, um, ask to waive the reading. Uh, and and we can actually do number two, uh, to introduce, uh, the ordinance. And number three, set the November, uh, second, twenty twenty-two meeting at seven P M. Am I correct?
Uh, the best order would be to, uh, ask our building official to provide the report and then open it up for questions from the council and then the public.
I I, uh, I always forget that we do have a report on it, so thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protown, city council members, city teammates and public. I'm Eric Blinquist, the building official. I'm here this evening to present an ordinance that will make changes to Title fifteen, the building and construction portion of the municipal code. This ordinance is proposing to adopt the twenty twenty-two California Building Standards Codes as the basis of the Morgan Hill Building and Construction Codes. The twenty twenty-one International Property Maintenance Code is the property maintenance code of the City of Morgan Hill, and make minor changes to the Sustainable Building Regulations and the swimming pool portions of the municipal code. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission adopts certain uniformed building standards to be used throughout the states. In its Title twenty-four, the California Code of Regulations, the California Building Standards Codes. Standards codes consist of twelve distinct and separate parts. Parts are identified, uh, on this, on the screen. Building standard codes are required to be enforced in every jurisdiction throughout California. All building permit applications received after January first of the following year, um, are required to comply with those new standards. Local jurisdictions may amend these state mandated standards to be stricter upon express findings that the amendments are reasonable and necessary due to local climatic conditions, local geological conditions, or local topographical conditions. In keeping with the long-running history of having our own local building and construction code, this ordinance is proposing to adopt the entire twenty twenty-two California Building Standards Codes by reference and only amend the same sections adopted during the two thousand nineteen code cycle. These amendments are proposed in the California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Plumbing Code, and California Fire Code. California Building Code and Residential Code amendments are fire sprinklers in existing single-family, two-family and townhomes are required when an addition increases square foot footage by twelve hundred square feet. Or the addition increases the total building area to more than thirty-six hundred square feet. Prohibits the use of gypsum board and Portland cement plaster to be used as baseball panels, requires reinforcement in concrete building slabs. These are exactly the same amendments that was adopted in the two thousand nineteen code cycle that are currently being enforced. Proposed California Plumbing Code amendments are to remove the exception that allowed type M copper to be used in the potable water system. Prohibit water piping to be installed directly in or under a concrete floor of a building without prior approval. These are also the same amendments that were adopted in the two thousand nineteen code cycle and currently being enforced. The fire code is historically, uh, the code that sees the majority of our local amendments. This code cycle, we're proposing less amendments than the two thousand nineteen version due to the twenty twenty-two California Fire Code changes that now closely align with some of our previous amended sections. The amendments being proposed are similar to the code amendments that was adopted under the two thousand nineteen code cycle. They are based on the proposals of the city fire marshal and suggestions of the Santa Clara County Fire Marshals Association that provide consistency among local jurisdictions. Some of these amendments are having the fire service access design policies added into the body of the code. Requires fire sprinklers in all new residential buildings with the exception of an ADU when the main house does not have fire sprinklers. Requires fire sprinklers for non-residential buildings larger than twelve hundred square feet and for existing buildings when an addition increases the square footage by twelve hundred square feet or the addition increases the total bear- building area to more than thirty-six hundred square feet. Exceptions are allowed for structures used exclusively for parking or for photovoltaic when meeting specific criterias. These amendments are similar to the amendments adopted in the two thousand nineteen cycle and do not propose any significant changes. Being proposed to adopt the twenty twenty-one International Property Maintenance Code to be used as the property maintenance code of the city, replacing the two thousand eighteen version, this proposal will also amend the si- same section that was previously adopted, having no significant changes to the code currently being enforced. It is being proposed to revise section fifteen sixty-five of the municipal code titled Sustainable Building Regulations to eliminate the reference to a specific year of the California Energy Code, eliminating the need to update the section with every triennial code adoption. And the swimming pools, section fifteen sixty-six, the swimming pool regulation is being revised to remove the exception that allowed pool safety covers to be installed on private pools instead of the pool being enclosed. Enclosures separates the pool from neighboring properties. This section is also being revised to update the pool enclosure design requirements to be consistent with the California Building Standard Codes and the state health and safety code requirements. This process forward, the next step would be to introduce, waive the reading, and set the next city council meeting on November second as the time for public hearing to consider adoption of this ordinance. And this concludes my presentation. I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to look to my, uh, council members for any questions. I see no questions, so I'm going to, um, open it up to, uh, any public comments. I'm going to look to the deputy city clerk to see. I'm going to look to the deputy city clerk to see if there's anybody in the queue.
No, sir, not in person or online.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to ask for the recommendation to, um, waive the, um, reading, reading and set the November 2nd, uh, 2022 at 7:00 PM as a date and time for a public hearing to consider adoption of the ordinance. So can I get an, uh, an action item here?
Yes, can we do all three?
Yeah, because this is an unusual code deduction. I believe you can do all three. You also need to, um, before you vote, you'll need the clerk to introduce the ordinance by title.
Okay. Sorry, thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember McKay. So, um, would the, um, Deputy City Clerk, please read the title and call the roll?
If I could get, uh, a second on that motion and then I could go ahead and introduce. Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
An ordinance of the City of Morgan Hill amending Chapter 15.08 Building Code, 15.12 Electrical Code, 15.16 Mechanical Code, 15.20 Plumbing Code, and 15.44 Fire Code to adopt by reference the 2022 California State Building Standards Codes known and designated as California Code of Regulations Title 24, amending Chapter 15.25 Property Maintenance to adopt by reference the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code and to make minor changes to sections in Chapters 15.65 Sustainable Building Regulations and 15.66 Swimming Pools of Title 15 Building and Construction of the Morgan Hill Municipal, Municipal Code. Mayor Protem Borziovi.
Aye.
Councilmembers Martinez Beltran.
Aye, and I'm grateful for the required pool enclosure for swimming pools.
McKay?
Aye, thank you.
Spring? Thank you.
Councilmembers, uh, number eight, receive monthly budget update, uh, September 20, uh, 22 financial and investment reports and the City Manager Authority Report. I think we have that at the podium to make a presentation. Am I correct that?
Yes, Councilmember Protem. Mayor Protem, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members, uh, back wing, finance director. The item you have here tonight is the, uh, our regular monthly budget update and as well as the financial report through the, uh, first quarter ended, uh, September 30th, uh, 2022. The overview of the presentation is, uh, again, prior to the, uh, councils and the public of the monthly budget update. And as of this time, uh, through the first quarter of this fiscal year, uh, we do not have any, uh, budget adjustments be recommended at this time. Uh, first of all, I want to go over the general fund, uh, through the first quarter. Uh, there has been no material change since the last budget update we brought to council and the public in August 17. And for both revenues and expenditures are currently tracking budget. Same thing for development services or front 206. Uh, both revenues and expenditures are currently budget, uh, tracking budget as well. And for the enterprise funds, which comprised of water and wastewater, uh, through the first three months of the fiscal year, uh, could, um, our community residents has, uh, reduced consumption about 17%. As such, uh, 15% of water revenue stipulation rate was implemented. And for the water, for the sewer operations, revenue and expenditures are currently tracking within budget as well. And this graph shows the updated general fund forecast. As you can see, there's been no changes since the, we last presented to council on August 17. And that concludes my presentation and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, Councilmember McKay?
Okay, as always, Dat, great, good information. But one thing that I, I notice we look at every month as we keep on looking at, at the graph, which shows that in about 2027, 2028, we're going to start to dip below our reserves. At what point do we actually start to take the actions to start to mitigate those losses? Um, or is there something on the horizon that we anticipate?
Yes, the council, our current council policy is that if the long-term council reserve growth 25% is reached, uh, the councils need to take action within a year. So as you mentioned, uh, we don't anticipate, based on the current trajectory, we don't anticipate to reach that level until 2027, 28. So there's plenty of time, but, uh, definitely the, uh, leadership team and, uh, and the staff group we sent to councils with the, uh, strategies and, uh, uh, recommendations to the council at the, uh, upcoming budget process.
Okay, thank you, um. So looking at that, I, and I remember looking at that same graph over the years and we were supposed to hit that budget reserves, I think, in '24 or '25 or whatever. So it keeps on getting pushed out, which is a good thing because hopefully we will have, you know, some type of revenue come in that will help push it out till, you know, I'm gone. So are there any little things that we should be doing along the way? Or are we going to, um, continue? And again, I, I think we're not cutting because I think we've cut about as far as we can. But are there any other things that we can be doing?
That's correct. Your council member, you mentioned it. Uh, it seems like every budget year we present with the council and the public with this, uh, uh, decline, uh, reserve. But we will deceive very fortunate. Uh, uh, some of the forecasts we sent to councils during budget process was coming, uh, typically coming higher than we forecasted. As well as expenditures coming below what we forecast as well. That's because we have a hard time, especially in last, you know, recent years. Uh, hard time just, and like any other agencies, hard time recruiting staff. As well as, uh, you know, um, uh, city teammates who are very careful with their budget.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'm going to keep on going this way until you raise that flag, right? Raise that red flag. Thank you.
Hopefully not, anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKay. Councilmember, um, Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Hi, Dat. It's good to see you. It's good to be back in person. Um, I, the only question that I have is under your September 2022 financial report summary, you talked about the overall general fund revenues total 5.2 million or about 10% of the budget. Now, some of the major revenue categories are received later in the fiscal year. And expenditures, including encumbrances, amounted to 15.1 million or 28% of the budget. So that seems really lopsided. How does that even out as we get later in the year? And we don't have much time left, so I'm just wondering, what is that? How does, how does that ratio work out?
Right, uh, typically, some of the, our major revenue categories, like, uh, property tax, we all know, uh, I myself, uh, just received tax bill. And we typically don't pay them in, until sometime in December or April. So those revenues, uh, don't, won't collect by county and not submit to us until later in the months. So right now, we only through September, we haven't received any, any, um, meaningful property tax revenue yet. And again, uh, property tax is a major source of revenue for general fund. As well as some other, uh, revenues, just as franchise tax fees and stuff, that typically, typically come in, in the, like, quarter. And, uh, this, this is about the timing differences. And, uh, as mentioned, uh, some of major revenues that come in until later toward the year. Uh, as for expenditures, we do have to spend, as we normally do, every month or every quarter. They don't, uh, get deferred.
Okay. When would you say that that ratio is the most balanced?
Yeah, but probably most balanced by the third quarter of the fiscal year. I would say in April or May, that's when everything becomes, you know, in balance, when we receive, uh, majority of our property tax and, uh, our, most of the other tax came in.
Okay, thank you, Dat.
Councilmember, uh, Spring?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, thank, thank you so much for your reports. Good to see you again. It's been a while. Uh, um, good to see in person again. It's been a while, yeah. The, uh, well, one question I, I have is, is I'm kind of, uh, giving you an opportunity to shout out. So the, the city got a very positive, like, credit rating. Uh, it's not mentioned in the report, but I think you should mention it. What was it?
Very good.
Thank you. Yes, uh, uh, thank you, Councilmember. As you, uh, mentioned, uh, city recently received the AAA rating from the S and P. And of course, it's no, uh, small work by the, uh, council that give us direction and the work done by our city management as well as staff.
Yeah, so congratulations. And I know that, uh,
And congratulations.
To you and your staff and the city, uh, everyone involved. I, I think there's not every city has that, just want to make it very clear.
But just to echo what Dat just said, it's all, it's a testament to the council and the policies that have been adopted each year.
Thank you, but I'll, I'll give it back to staff to compliment here. The, um, uh, the part that worries me probably like, like some of you as well is, you know, uh, inflation seems to be sticking around longer than, than, than most of us would like to. Now, when I look at those numbers and view forecasting, uh, what does that mean? What, what, are, are numbers going to stay the same? Or what, are we going to expect major changes soon?
Uh, we are hopeful that they will remain the same or at least meet our budget. Um, uh, as, as you can see in our, uh, in our budget, uh, you notice that, uh, as, uh, Councilmember Protem, uh, asking, uh, the question about the same tax, uh, we have the increase, uh, in fiscal '22, 14% from prior year. But, uh, this year in fiscal '23, we budget a slight reduction. And that's some of the thing that you variables that you mentioned, Councilmember Spring, is that because of, uh, inflationary pressures that we are experiencing and as because of the pent-up demand that may have been, uh, done from the past year. But we are hopeful that, uh, especially in the property tax front, uh, will not change, at least in the near term, because whatever happened in the economy, property tax is like special for this year, has been, uh, secure, mostly collected, uh, billed by the county. So that number is, um, very fixed. Uh, sale tax, again, very volatile, but, um, uh, even with the inflation pressures that we are experiencing, um, the consumers really saw the reducency and, uh, the, uh, they still spending. So, um, we are hopeful that that number will hold, um, uh, looking forward to upsides as well.
Yeah, it, it's, it's very weird economy, right? In years past, one would say we're in a recession, but, uh,
Well, uh, yeah, it was two years ago.
Maybe we are, but it's not clear yet, right? It hasn't been called yet, let me put it that way. But let, let's assume we, we might end up there, right? At some point, it will happen. Do we have a, a, a plan somewhere that you or city manager, someone can pull and say, okay, this is what we need to do to just get on, get on track and deal with the new reality?
Yeah, uh, the budget that we put together did provide some of the flexibilities. If the worst case that comes to fruition, then, uh, the city managers, you mentioned, and leadership will present to the council, um, some of the, uh, recommendations that, uh, try to mitigate the, uh, you know, the impact that, uh, we, you, you mentioned that, uh, may be common to, to us.
In my, thank you. And my last question i- is, uh, again, related to the inflation numbers too. At what, at what point to, does that impact the fees we're going to charge or have to charge?
Uh, they do, um, actually, we,
Have held in already?
Uh, we'll be impacted, uh, we, we have the, uh, we have two fee schedule. One is, uh, just, uh, effective July 1st of this year, uh, for the development services fee, which I think we increased by 6.8% because those fees are billed, annual fee increases are billed on CPI. And as of July 1st of, uh, this year, I think we, uh, the fee increase was about over 6% because of the, uh, uh, inflation. And for the upcoming, uh, January, uh, increase, uh, fees for the impact fees, uh, there will be increase of 50% uh, based on the, uh, leaders', uh, CPI.
And, and, and does that include then, you know, what we charge for permits and services by planning department and so on?
Yes, yes.
So then we'll get adjusted in January?
Uh, those are, uh, implemented in July 1st of this year already, July 1st, 2022. Uh, those are like the usual fees, like planning permit and billing. And the other one I just mentioned came in January is for the impact fees.
Okay, so then the next adjustment to, uh, next July, June, July?
They are adjusted annually.
Okay, got it. Uh, thank you so much. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Spring. So Dat, I must admit, you look very different in person than that little screen I'm used to seeing you in.
Much handsome, all right?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, a lot more handsome, I, I must admit, yeah.
And the collared shirt and tie help out.
Absol- absolutely, yes. So, um, so my questions were answered, uh, prior to the meeting, so thank you, Christina. So what I'd like to do is, um, uh, bring this over to, oh, that, that was the questions, right? So, uh, open it up to the, uh, public. So Deputy City Clerk, do we have anybody in the queue?
Yes, sir. Chobanowski.
Thank you.
Yeah, hello, um, hi, Dat. Uh, and thank you for, uh, taking the time to, uh, give me a detailed, uh, response to my question. I didn't have time to follow up with you before tonight, but, you know, um, this kind of has come up usually during, um, the yearly or mid-year reviews, uh, meeting when, uh, we get to a significant project update and we go through this kind of mind-numbing, uh, page after page after page of, um, the new development. And, and several council members have, uh, made informal requests for the staff to kind of, you know, um, uh, give some idea of, of what the, um, net revenue, what's the benefit of all this, um, in terms of the general fund? You know, i- i- if, if nothing else, so, um, residents who see this and, and, you know, it's, obviously, not everyone's happy with it, can, this whole kind of, well, they're going to pay the bills. People could understand that a bit more. And also so that they would have a feeling like, well, how's that tracking? Um, and, and the general fund forecast has a lot of assumptions built into it that nobody knows anything about. Especially this year, there was no, uh, full-day budget workshop, so there was no kind of detailed review. And I know the city manager has said that, you know, you guys kind of take the middle, uh, range of estimates, not, not optimistic, not negative, but that, I don't have any idea what they are. And so I was really surprised. My question was, what assumptions, um, for 2022 and 2023, um, calendar years were built into, um, the Butterfield Five project? You know, a huge project, uh, 500, 410,000 square feet that everyone sees. And the answer was that it was just, there's no assumptions except for what the property taxes increase is going to be. Um, is that just because you're being ultra-conservative? I mean, that's kind of surprising, I think, to the public to hear that, um, for that, you know, impact on the community, um, the city's not expecting anything except for property tax. Um, at least for 2022 and 2023, maybe further out in the, in the cycle, in the forecast, you start to add some, uh, things like, uh, potential, um, uh, use taxes, other revenue, uh, contributions. Um, so again, thank you for your answer. It was surprising. You know, if you could comment on that, I'd be interested. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Baranowski. I'm going to look to the city deputy city clerk again for any other.
No, I'm, see you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so now I'd like to move it to, uh, to council members to, uh, for an action item, so.
And the, the agenda on this one is just to receive, so you've received unless you have other comments?
Uh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry.
But there's, the, the agenda is just, this agenda item is just for you to receive the report, so there's no action item needed?
Thank you. Sorry, council members. So.
Uh, 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 Mayor Protem, if I may, is someone going to respond to Mr. Baranowski's? He asked for a clarification. It doesn't have to be tonight, probably, but.
I think he actually said he got a response, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so Mr., sure, so Mr. Baranowski sent in an email to Finance Director Wynn regarding the assumptions that were used in putting together the budget related to Butterfield Five and what was assumed in putting that together. And so our team, specifically Dat, responded to the email and we have supplemented, um, the item. And basically, as Mr. Baranowski stated, um, there is an assumption for property tax. But a- above and beyond that, there's not anything specifically budgeted for Butterfield Five at this time until we have, uh, an actual, uh, tenant. It's, you know, we can't predict whether or not there's going to be a sales tax based on business-to-business or, you know, other sort of, uh, revenue. And so it would be overly aggressive to budget otherwise.
Yeah, I, I saw, I saw the, the email exchange and answer. Maybe I misheard. I thought he asked for further clarification. I apologize if I misheard you, yeah.
Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you. Would we not have some estimate, would, would we not use some estimate in, you know, in?
you know, in? So we would, unless we, so we, one, we have to make sure that there's a great probability that a business is going to locate in Morgan Hill and is gonna operate and that we know the specific use. In this case, we don't know what's going to be there. However, what I would say is that in putting together our revenue budgets, our projections, we do just generally take into account growth in the economy, whether it be for sales tax or property tax. And so some level of that percentage is just based on new business. But in this case, you know, as I just mentioned, that was, you know, responded to, we don't have enough specifics to know what's gonna be there.
So you're specifically saying as far as budgeting, because we are forecasting, but even in our assumption when we're looking at, you know, maybe giving, when we're looking at a developer who is developing, wouldn't we even use the, the lowest use? Assume that a company is gonna come, that maybe isn't gonna be the highest best use and use that as our baseline?
Yeah, so in this particular case, it's, it's property tax, you know, and we don't have any other grounds in which to say that they're gonna generate any sort of sales tax in this case.
Okay, would that be part of our fiscal policy? We would just assume?
Just a part of our revenue assumptions and, yeah, and how we budget.
I think, I mean, it would probably be, I would think that we would use some type of, we do, so it's captured in just sort of an overall estimation and how the market's gonna change, you know, based on what we know. So for instance, in projecting for sales tax, so we take our, we take our base. And then we assume, if we know businesses that are coming in, you can specifically budget for that or, or businesses that have gone out of business, right? Or, or in addition to that, you know, we look at industry sectors. And so we know based upon working with our consultant that certain industries are looking like they're gonna do this, others are gonna do that. So our estimates are based on that. And we look at our sales tax results quarterly, and so we adjust them quarterly. But for establishing the initial budget, it's just based on what we know at the time.
Okay, I see. So what estimate do we use? What, um, you know, what segment do we use to estimate that tax?
So there's not, we, we don't, in this particular case, it's just the property tax that has been accounted for, if you will. Is there anything else you would add to that?
Good evening. Uh, no, I have nothing to add, except just want to make a further clarification that, like City Manager mentioned, we only budget, that that's only what we know. For instance, when we have something coming to the city as a new leadership, we work with our self-tax consultant to project the potential self-tax rate from that particular dealership. But for this one, Butterfield Five, since we don't like City Manager mention, we don't know nothing about and who the tenant may be, so nothing been projected except the property tax.
Okay, I think what the comment is getting now, or at least what I'm, the conclusion I'm coming to is that if we have not, if we don't have any type of baseline and we're just assuming that the property tax is what we are generating, you know, there's, I, I'm not really sure how, how we're justifying doing impact fee freezes or, or the like. So that's, that's what I'm trying to understand. I'm happy to talk about that offline if we need to, but, but I, I need to understand that a little bit better. Thank you.
Can I ask, I hate, since we're on a roll of asking questions, is it possible that a business can occupy a space and not generate any revenues that we would benefit from? Or do we pick up something possibly from income taxes for the employees? Where do we start to pick up the revenues from a business?
Yeah, so first is property tax. So that's based upon, you know, undeveloped land at first. And then as the land gets developed, we get, of course, increased property tax based upon that. Sales tax would be, would be picked up and that could just be your general, say, retail sales tax. Or it could be like business to business depending upon the type of business that moves in. In addition to that, you know, of course, we have hotel taxes if a hotel that, you know, was going into a particular spot. Dat, what other sort of business license fees? So, you know, while, you know, we have a, an older business tax, we do receive some level of revenue from that as well.
Are there any types of business where you get virtually no revenues?
Uh, we always get property tax, but above and beyond that, yeah, I mean, you're right, there's some that we wouldn't.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure, because if you, if there's a business that's working, business to business and they're doing wholesale and we don't get tax revenues from that, right?
Dat, you wanna expand on that?
Uh, that will be depend. If business to business was, products were sold, then reduced tax or sales tax would be generated on that transaction.
Okay, so wholesale can be taxed.
Yeah, and besides the fiscal impact of the property, you know, also important to keep in our minds the jobs that could be created by a potential development. You know, that's another sort of tenet of our economic development, it's jobs and dollars.
Yeah, so that's certainly an incredibly important aspect. And then some of the fee waivers that we've been applying, those really only take place when we have a tenant, right? When we have somebody like a hotel or a car dealership, they're coming, it's not their fee waiver, I should say, the incentive program. That doesn't cost us anything because nothing happens until they start to develop revenues. And even then, it's not that we're not getting the mon, it's not like we're, like we're not making money, it's just.
We're sharing in the incremental revenue that's received.
Long-term.
Yeah, and then the other program that we have is a fee financing agreement, which we still get the money, but it's just over time with interest.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dat.
So Mayor Protem, I'd just remind you, it is just shy of ten o'clock and ten o'clock is when, under the policies, you do a check-in on time.
So it's nine fifty-eight PM. We, we have item nine and ten going forward, so I'm gonna rely on staff to tell me, do you think this would take longer than forty-five minutes?
No. But that's dependent upon the level of, the amount of questions and discussion.
Okay, so then could I, can I ask council to extend the meeting for forty-five minutes?
I'll need a burger to do it. So just a reminder that, so the meeting is the, the policies to kind of check in at ten and then before eleven, decide whether or not we need to increase the time, extend the time. So, so we're good to go, I think, and maybe we can reassess after we finish item number nine.
Okay, thank you. So item number nine, approve draft content, road sports facility master plan. We have a presentation, I'm assuming by Chris?
Yes, Chris Keone, Public Services Director. Good evening, mayor, council members. And this item is a dra, bringing forward a draft master plan for our Condit Road Sports Facilities. As the council is well aware, we have the Outdoor Sports Center that is just about thirty-five acres next to the Aquatic Center, which is about ten acres. And then just outside the city in the county adjacent to those properties, we have fourteen acres land bank for future recreation facilities that the ci, the city owns. So this plan is basically on your docket and being put together for us to move forward with that long-term development. Now, I will say this plan is a big, big plan that has many, many components and would take a very long time to, to develop. But moving forward with a master plan, so we can move forward with an environmental review of our future proposed plans is necessary to develop that undeveloped property. So that's why we're going forward with it now. And I, I will say, we do not have enough money to develop that whole site. We will not have enough money to develop that site for a long time. But as many of our previous planning documents and work has, has planned for and demonstrated, we're good at partnering and we're good at getting grants. So once we have things that are closer to being shovel-ready, we have a greater opportunity for those things. So as we prepared for this plan, we have some background documents we've been looking at. That's our Bike Ways Trails Parks and Rec Master Plan. And then with that, we developed a sports market business strategy, which talks about many of the things you were discussing with Krista Rupp earlier. How do we develop this to balance our local users with cost recovery for regional events? And supporting our sports tourism. So it, it's a balance and our, our plans talk about that. We, a few years ago, did a sand volleyball feasibility analysis that really said, hey, we don't know if sand volleyball is gonna work as a regional facility, but it could work if you have a partner coming in to help pay to build it. That's why you'll see that the plan has multiple options. We're not selecting an option, but we're looking at different potential paths to move forward so that we can clear them environmentally, get shovel-ready, look for those grants and partners. And there's gonna be future work needed before, before development. In addition to the environmental work we're talking about and getting dollars, the property in the county will take additional work with the county to develop. But we're moving forward with that process. That's the point of what we're doing today. The next slides are gonna go through the, the concept plans and to do that, I'm gonna introduce Derek McKee from Verdi Designs, who's done most of the work to prepare this for us.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So the, the plan we have in front of you encompasses the whole project site. And then we split it up into two, just for a better view, north and south. Besides the fields, we looked at improving the parking lots, couple of them right now are aggregate base or base rock. We are looking at ADA improvements all the way around. All the fields should have a perimeter walkway at least on one side. We have some new buildings in the project and so we'll just, I'm gonna go into the north part. So the north part is, is really the, the part that exists. It has the two synthetic fields that are lighted and then it has, the rest of the fields are natural turf. We're moving the, the one courtyard or maintenance yard that's up there and that'll allow us to create another full-size field. And then on the bottom portion, we're gonna improve the parking lot that's over there and move those fields that are there a little bit to the west so that they can create larger soccer fields. We're also proposing solar in that parking lot there. And you can see we're adding trees around the fields for shade and opportunity for sprayer areas. We'll zoom in on a couple of areas in a minute, but the other thing with all the fields is we're gonna, we're proposing to light all the remaining fields. So right now, there are four fields that are, that have lights and, and all the fields in the design will have lights plus the volleyball court area. The other important thing is Murphy Avenue has not been improved adjacent to this park site. Whereas above San Pedro, it has been improved. So what you see above San Pedro is expected to continue down with this project and that'll provide parking on Murphy. For the bottom portion, at the Aquatic Center, we are looking to move the entry of the Aquatic Center over toward the side that faces Condit or the west side. And the current entry will be changed into a restaurant or concession area. And then we're proposing that plaza out there be modified into a, a, a big shade type structure, eatery, a place to relax. And then we're also modifying the parking lot there at the Aquatic Center to allow for more parking and not have the drop-off there. And then the parking lot below the Aquatic Center will be improved. You can see the sand court area with the fourteen, fifteen courts. One of them's the championship court, has its own entry, ticketing, restrooms, things like that. There's a courtyard above that and then we have two fields over on the east side. One of them is a large, I think it will be our largest field here, but it's a synthetic field. Be able to accommodate potentially high school sports. And then it'll have larger bleacher capacity to meet the needs of the local high school. And then above that is a, is another synthetic field. So the fields above, we were keeping as natural grass because of the Fourth of July event in that area, the ones on the bottom portion here. So you would have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight fields here, natural turf, two existing synthetic. And then on the bottom, we're adding two more. And then there's parking lots there. And then we did add bleachers for that field above and then there's also bleachers for these fields that are down here in this, this parking area too. We have a couple more things we can zoom in on, but there's two options for the bottom portion. One of them is doing the volleyball, there are actually three, another one is taking the volleyball out, doing parking. Another one is removing one of the fields, keeping the volleyball and adding parking over there. The last two options, we estimate align with the demand for parking if everything is at max occupancy here. And there's our parking, we can get into that with questions later if you ask. And then in the, the mall area, we're expanding it, putting a playground in, looking to do a team type room building there with maybe a press box up top. The well will, will remain, which is this structure kind of in the center. But we expanded this, more space, fire lane, places for food trucks, vendors, pop-up tents, those types of things. So this is the, the team room building that would be over there. It could be set up again with a press box up top that could view fields to the north or fields to the south, also has public restrooms in it. I think all of our buildings actually have public restrooms and private restrooms in it that are like this building. We did a community room that could also be used for tournament headquarters, which we think is important. We've all been out here on tournament days and it's chaos and having some kind of a hub inside, especially on inclement weather is good. And that can be used as a community room. It has public restrooms there too. This is located in the existing soccer gravel parking lot area. This is the plaza area outside of the Aquatic Center that we're looking at. There's a couple of views of it. Nice structure, I thought there was one more view, sorry. We also have bike over here, parking. And then for the Aquatic Center, we're expanding the Aquatic Center to the east, looking to add play equipment in there. We did this option with sand volleyball, more gazebo's, more shade over there, just more space for people to hang out. You know, at swim meets and, and on the weekends. And then the other option was putting in a wave pool in the center and then doing more gazebo's and cabanas around that area. This would be the new entry building that would be against the parking lot on the east side of the Aquatic Center. At the, uh, the field that can be used for high school, we set up home and visitor locker rooms. And then the visitor one would also have ticket booth too, and both of those buildings have public restrooms in a private, like team room, showers and restrooms for the players.
Thanks, Derek. And we can, we can jump into more detail on any items like the, the council would like to. So as we talk about next steps, what we're really talking about is approving a draft plan. And that is so we can move towards an environmental review, because we have not done, done that for the expanded area yet. So the council can, at this point, give us direction. Does it look good? Does it need major changes? Or you can approve it and say, we'd like to see these other things adjusted before it comes back on final, uh, final approval. So there, there's some options for you. And so after the environmental review, that final plan will come back and then we would develop a phased development plan. That development plan will be quite opportunity-based, based on partners and based on grant funding and, and other opportunities that, that we can get. We have done a bunch of outreach for this. Attached to the, to the staff report is a survey that we did online. We had some community meetings. We had meetings with local, with our partners at the Outdoor Sports Center, staff at the Aquatic Center, people that are kind of experts on those areas. And then we also met with different user groups and got different comments from different user groups. And then the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed this multiple times before. They recommended approval to the, to the council, so that is a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission. So that, our recommendation is you provide any comments that you have, ask questions and then approve the draft plan so we continue, can continue this process moving forward. With that, Derek and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you for the presentation, both of you. So now I look to my colleagues and Councilmember Spring quickly put up his hand first. So, it's to you.
I'm still awake. The, uh, thank, thank you for the report. The, you know, I, I must admit, the, the dreaming is. The uh uh than than thank you for the report. The, you know, I I must admit the the dreaming is nice, but are we dreaming too big here? Uh, and and when when I'm just a realistic person and when I look at the number a hundred million for a full bill out, it's probably going to be a hundred fifty million by the time if ever were to happen, if not more, that's a number. When I think of Morgan Hill, it's just out of my imagination. And 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 I don't even know how realistic something like that is in our area. Uh, yes, I know there's a lot of local interest or so, but none of them would ever be able to to fund uh any of it. So so where where do we put the stopgap in and say, okay, this this was a nice a nice exercise, but we we know we're that the dream will never uh come true. Some dreams do, but that one might never come true, probably not in my lifetime.
I I do not disagree with you. However, what we're trying to do is provide different options so that the portions of that dream can come true and that we've we've cleared the the path for it because we have a lot of opportunities. I think your point that the hundred million dollars is a big step. Yeah, i- it's definitely a big step, but there's different portions in here that could happen. I do see lots of opportunities for millions of dollars in grant funding and potentially millions of dollars with, you know, private partners. So uh agree, but also think it's important that we we do this exercise so that we have those opportunities and we don't miss out on them.
And so in your, I I'm sure you've thought about that. What timeline do you have in mind? Are we talking about five years, ten years, fifty years, a hundred years?
Yeah, so we have, we have within our capital improvement budget within six years, several million dollars to put towards this. Um, we don't have which phases would be identified. That obviously be something that go through the commission and the council and probably be tied to an update to our Parks and Rec master plan, which is coming up. But we we have that, those dollars. If if you remember, on the sand volleyball side, that would be dependent on interest of, you know, a private or nonprofit group that has dollars. I'm still in contact with those groups and I contacted one um yesterday specifically about this this item that's still expressed interest. So it's going to be dependent on what comes forward once we have the clients. And then a- a- as you know, with grant funding, you know, just like our playground at Magical Bridge, we had no grant funding, then we had several million dollars worth of grant funding. Um, so so things can work out and we just gotta, we have to be be ready for those things. And 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 that's the plan. But I can't, I can't give you a timeline specifically on any of that. I I would say within the next five years, we will make improvements. Um, but exactly what that will be decided by council on what your priorities are.
Yeah, so so you know, the Magical Bridge part for me, that was within reach, right? There was a dream I that we knew we can make happen, a hundred million plus.
Yeah, so.
I I I'm sorry.
I I do, I do agree, but let's talk about the pieces, right? So let's just say the stadium piece that we've talked about. So it's one of the fields that's on the the new property. I mean, that could be a I I think a ten ten million dollars, it might be more than that to build up the whole thing. But say you don't build up the whole thing, but say you built up part of it. Part of our partnership, we've been talking to the school district. What happens if they use that facility and partner with us to use it there and they can bring funds? We work together and we do something that becomes a little bit closer to be in reach, not the whole hundred million, but but different. We've talked to, you know, our partners at the M H O S C, which have a foundation that works with them. If we talked about the partnership's working well, we go to a longer term lease, maybe they bring another million dollars to build the the team room or those sort of things. So so the the pieces are in reach. The solar, which be several million dollars, is there a grant fund, the grant funding available for that? So that that's why I I don't disagree with you, but we still want to dream so that we can try and achieve it.
Right. And I and I understand where you, I think I understand where you're coming from as a starting point right now, right? To 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 go to the next step, but at what 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 time, when are we gonna discuss the more reasonable, reachable smaller project that are part of the big dream?
Yeah, I I think within the next couple of years, we would be designing things that we have dollars to spend. And then um moving that forward within the next five years, um if the council so chooses.
Yeah, and then you you know, this is this is definitely a long-term project and it's an outdoor project. The other part that worries me, it's it's all outdoors and then if our summers get longer and hotter and hotter, is that still a good project down the road, right? If there's not no shade and 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 we can't water it, obviously, because the water might not be around and how how does that work with climate changes here? It's it's happening, right? And 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 this is a project that I don't see that fits at all in here.
I I actually think it does fit. Um, I think what Derek talked about, we have shade and other facilities to su- support that. There are big soccer complexes, huge soccer complexes in Southern California. So as our climate becomes more like the Southern California climate, it doesn't mean people um aren't going to play and use the facilities. But but you are correct. We have to adapt and provide things for them. Synthetic turf, which Derek showed on some of the new fields, um, would be uh could be a priority in that case where you're not using as much as much water. Hopefully, the costs of installing synthetic turf, uh that technology improves and come down in the future, but that that would be an option.
Right, and that also has has negative impacts on the environment. But would would those be this this close and discussed part of the environmental review?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, uh the the only feedback I have with regards to, I don't like any project that don't consider parking in that area. The I I think the ones that say there's not not parking, I I don't want to consider those at all. I don't think those are good projects.
So so I I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, the reason we have the third option would be is if we had a partner next door that could provide the parking to support um the the growth. So i- it's just an opportunity-based um program. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't move forward with it. Um, we would only move forward with the two options that that either the options that could provide the parking. And to be honest, that decision on building that final parking is far down the road because as you pointed out, there's a lot of things to build that are going to cost a lot of money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think Councilmember Martinez Beltran was next.
Thank you, Chris, for the report. Um, this is great. It's it's exciting. It's a bit daunting, but it is exciting at the same time. I'm hanging on your every word and trying to see, I would love for us to get there for and I I think we do have to dream. I absolutely understand like Councilmore Spring is saying. I mean, I've talked about, you know, possibly holding off on Magical Bridge because we didn't have maintenance to maintain that. I and I think those are all really important things that we have to be thinking about. But I also, I'm thinking about how this fits. And I'm always talking about economic development and and where does it fit? And this is something that I can see fitting in Morgan Hill and in in what Morgan Hill is about and what the values are, people who love the out the outdoor space and if we could make this work, it could be really fantastic, you know? I think one thing I will say right off the bat is that I would want our local kids to have more access to this. It's something that I that has plagued me and it bothers me with the outdoor sports center. I know we've talked about it before, so that's something that would definitely be looking for us to increase. Now, going from that, I'm going to ask, can you walk us through this project? Can you pull it up and and walk the public through what the project is? There's lots of fields here. Some are synthetic, some aren't.
And Derek, I'm just going to go to the big picture screen and I think um what this is, is there's options to expand into the undeveloped property. So those options, um as Derek pointed out, are two more new fields, synthetic turf fields. We we sometimes we say soccer fields, but they're really multi-use fields and they can do almost any sport.
So, right here, if you could just orient the public where it's at. When I look at this on my iPad, it's very hard. It keeps shifting off the screen. I know what this looks like and probably most people who spend time out there do. But you're looking at this going from north to south. If you could just orient everybody.
So if you can see my arrow, this is Murphy Avenue coming down this way. This is Condit Avenue coming down this way. As Derek pointed out, these eleven fields, eleven, they're currently eleven and a half fields of the existing complex. This becomes a twelfth field where the back corporation yard is gone. And the corporation yard moves over into this area, as Derek showed. This is the existing aquatic center. And this is the um existing parking lot that's unpaved where it shows it paved now. If you see the solar panels, that's the existing dirt rot next to the aquatic center. This area right here is the undeveloped four acres that the council or the city purchased a couple of years ago, where the volleyball courts are. And where these two fields are is the undeveloped, uh what we call um former Lamonto property that we purchased. And those are the two areas that are in the county and land bank for the future use.
The light green. What is the light green? That's not ours.
These ones right here? And I think your mic can. Oh, this, that's a property not owned by the city.
Right. Now, just just adjacent to the aquatic center is this wave pool and and he discussed some other things. Can you point that out and tell us what, what it is now? Okay, now I know where the existing parking is. Where is there additional parking?
So in this option, there's not a huge amount of additional parking except for up here next to the uh soccer fields. And that's why this option is the the one with um that we'd need to find additional offsite parking. In the other options, without sand volleyball, you see the additional parking right here where sand volleyball was. And then the last option where sand volleyball is here, we only go with one field. You see all this additional parking around the one field.
What is the thought that we would do for parking if we were to do the first option?
We don't know yet. We're just there could be additional property that's picked up over the next ten years as we're developing. Or it could be uh new development next door that has uh, you know, a weekday intense parking, but doesn't have intense weekend parking that we share with, things like that.
Okay, and where are the concessions?
So this is kind of cool. Um, and Derek talked about it, but what I think, um, so this plaza right out in front of where the aquatic center is, kind of where the um turnaround is. Inside the aquatic center right now, we have a tiny concession stand, but it has a commercial kitchen. So we would put the entrance, as Derek said, at the um between where you can kind of enter the comp pool now um off the side parking lot. It's actually better operationally, so people that were going to swim laps don't have to walk past the other pools. It's kind of a an issue for us. And then we take that space where the offices are and that would be retrofitted into using the existing existing industrial kitchen into a restaurant kind of concession stand that could support the entire outdoor sports center. And this plaza would be next to it. And we're doing that because we believe it's a a better opportunity for cost recovery for the entire site. And using that area, you'd be able to serve inside the aquatics and outside to the sports center.
And you have the existing uh concession at the soccer area too right now?
Correct.
Right, okay. Who are you thinking of partnering with besides the school district?
Okay, so we have the sand volleyball groups who have partnered with us. We have our existing partners at the outdoor sports center. Uh, we have had past um interests from different um semi-professional organizations um that said they could kind of help us um use the facility if we had different amenities. Um, those are, I think, some of the the big ones for sure.
Okay, and then what would we um, wh- what percentage of this hundred million would we be looking to fund? You said we can't do a hundred million?
I believe we we'd have in the next five or six years, it's not even ten million on our own without partners. So ten percent.
Okay, so we're thinking that we would fund ten percent?
To start, for ten years. Over a hundred years, we may fund more. The council's going to make those decisions as we allocate money in our capital improvement program because there's other needs across the city.
So the mass, you're, what you're looking for now is just to create this this draft plan. But it's a draft, it's not a master plan. It's a draft plan that can change, that would possibly allow us to expand up to a certain amount, but then we would start building out specific pieces?
Yes.
Okay, so we build two fields over ten years and then we build the sand volleyball over the next ten years?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that, I mean, I don't know if those are the exact items, but I think you're using it as an example and I would say exactly.
Okay, um, what does athletic field mean? Soccer, football, cricket? What what, how do you define that?
Yeah, it's basically field sports. So that's soccer, American football, lacrosse, you know, both of men and women or boys and girls. Yeah, for those sports, rugby is another one. I know that they have lacrosse tournaments out here. So it's it's field sports. It's those types of sports. The sports that would not be here would be baseball and softball.
And that's because of.
And uh, what was that?
Because we have another site.
Correct.
Right.
Oh, Derek forgot, like the dog agility games.
Okay.
It's not a sport. Okay, sorry.
Basketball courts?
Not, not, not in this location.
Not in this location, okay. Can we reduce? Looking at our options, you gave us three different options. If we went with one option, are we able to reduce one of the sand courts? Could we change the fields to courts and courts to fields? And what does that entail in cost?
You could not change more courts to fields because of the shape of how the sand volleyball is laid out, right, Derek?
Yeah, that that four acre property down there really works well for fifteen courts. It's maybe a little tight, but
Sand courts?
Fifteen sand courts, yes.
So you're saying we couldn't convert sand courts to field to fields?
Not in that location, but the sand could go to the other places, yes.
Yes.
Really, nothing's going to fit in that location where you have the sand courts because it's kind of an irregular shape. Parking is one. We put the uh the maintenance yard down there. And then another field there.
Okay.
And I I think by putting these options together, that flexibility remains to do that. So just because the design designs are going to help us with the environmental review, but if you're shifting between the site, I think that flexibility would still remain as we develop long-term.
The the other note too with the volleyball is, this volleyball is huge right now. It is, it is unbelievably popular. Um, we are doing all these courts at junior colleges, division one colleges for sand volleyball. My kid plays tournament volleyball. He's at tournaments every other weekend. And with that, there's like five tournaments with the different age groups going on around California. It is, you go to these things and it's unbelievable how many courts there are. They're in convention centers. It's, it is astonishing. It is very big. So, well, that is indoor volleyball, but sand volleyball will will, it's the same people. It's just less people playing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Chris, how much do we have to spend on this?
To develop?
Or a draft plan?
Uh, I believe the contract was about one hundred thousand dollars.
Not what will it cost? How much do we have to spend on this? Have we allocated anything for this?
In in our C I P, I I trying to remember off the top of my head, in like the sixth year of the C I P, we have, I believe, like five million dollars or so. I can I can look it up if you give me um two minutes.
Okay. And then the draft plan, you think it's going to be about a hundred thousand dollars? To do this?
As I look it up, the draft plan's already paid for. You've already allocated that. There there's no more to be done. I mean, we're finishing this. And then the environmental review, uh we we haven't got a a scope on the cost of that.
I mean, but if we pick an option, wouldn't you have to?
We we do not recommend picking an option. We recommend the
Exploring all three.
That we we do, the master plan has options as we move forward and we review them all environmentally and keep our options open.
Okay, and then finally, the last one is, have we put any version of this up at the sports complex? At the sports complex, at the aquatic center, so at the CRC? So that people who are using our recreation facilities, like myself, would see this as their taking kids here and there.
Um we have not, but we can.
I would ask that we please do that, that would be fantastic, these are all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, um council member, um council member McKay?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, great, great job there, Chris. Um, okay, so I want to, I I just want to confirm a few things. We have three options as we all move forward um with varying degrees of input from us. They will go to um to be evaluated in the EIR. Typically, what we'll do is we go worst case, which would probably be the volleyball courts, right? Because of the parking and and so we'll get worst case based on the worst. Case of any of the three options and so we're covered, we can do anything within that envelope of approval or. Within the um EIR at that point, right? So this basically what you're doing is you're just, you've got a vision, it's very broad, we can go a lot of places. And that's the goal. Okay, just confirming.
Yeah, but but Sequo doesn't really look at parking, Sequo looks at traffic. Um and that's the issue we have with Sequo is that it doesn't look at the parking demand. Um but again, the parking demand is is stating that everything's in use, you're at maximum use. The aquatic center has a meet, you had all the fields going. But you don't have to have it that way, you you are in control of the schedule. So you may say, okay, soccer, you go ahead and aquatics, you go ahead, but volleyball, you can't go ahead because we already got two other events happening. So you have some ability to control this, we're just projecting out what the maximum would be at one moment.
Yeah, so we've got a a number of options, um the EIR, what is the life of an EIR? Before you have to go and radio it?
I I don't know that we will be doing a full EIR, we're still um going to be working through that. But um yeah, I I think Jennifer will say, you know, it's half a decade, but. Um I might be corrected.
Typically, okay, but then we can, we can update that and then absolutely, okay, so we can keep it going. Um the courtyard, we keep on hearing about the courtyard, is that for all the equipment used on the facility? Or does that include uh equipment that's used outside the facility too? On the facility, okay, so it's just purely the equipment needed for for the function there. Um so Sobrato, I guess, is the high school we're talking about? We've had discussions, they're all all preliminary, but um but the the school district's been exploring options. But it it could be a different partner, you know, down the road. Now, I'd just like to hear that maybe we do have an option for Sobrato. And we've been struggling with that to have a lighted field for their uh sports activities. Um I think you've answered my question, it can be phased, it can be. It basically can be juggled any way we want, so as funds become available and as we see the needs. Um we can build within the three plans. I mean, basically, what we're we're just given a very, very flexible range of opportunities here is what I'm saying, is that? That's what you're trying to do, right?
Uh yes, but within those opportunities focused on supporting. Um our local users and balancing cost recovery and sports tourism, that that's really the focus. So we're trying to continue what we've done there and expand on it.
Okay.
Opportunities within that scope.
Good, I mean, I I love it because it's the first time I'm seeing, you know, the aquatic center becomes truly a part of the outdoor sports center. It's now, you know, I think people that went to the outdoor sports center sometimes just go, what what's that over there? I like the way that's fully integrated now, so we can see we have a true outdoor sports center. And I just think that, you know, this is visionary, this is, you know, many on the council here have said, dream big. And this is dreaming big and this, um we don't want to limit ourselves right off the bat, we've got great opportunities. And nice thing is you only build what you want when you want, you don't have to build anything. And so um I just think that what we're doing is looking at opportunities. And I think that anytime we create an opportunity for the future where we're not backing ourselves into a corner, I really appreciate the way this has been put together, so. Um that's it, I really don't have any comments about what I would like to see other than the fact. Uh all three of them move forward and and move into a the master plan process. Thank you.
Thank you, council member, if I could answer uh council member Martinez Beltran's earlier question, I've pulled up the CIP. And it's actually approximately eight million over the next six years potentially, if the council chooses to allocate that within the CIP.
Thank you, may I ask two follow up questions?
Um I I sure.
Thank you, one is have we talked with uh or consulted with any environmental groups on this? Plan?
Hey, so we have not consulted with any environmental groups specifically on the plan. Um we would go through the environmental process after the draft plan. If you're talking more about ag preservation, we have talked about things with the ball fields as we. The former ball field site that we transitioned, we've had conversations in all these areas within the mix. Um ongoing conversations for the last several years with different different groups, um including environmental groups, county and others.
Okay, okay, great, and then the other question that I had was um, which I can't believe I forgot, but. Uh how much do we believe that each option will garner of the three?
By garner, what's?
And far as far as revenues towards our recreation budget?
Um so I I I can't answer that 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 question.
Are volleyball courts more um lucrative than?
It's a great question and it would depend on if we have the right partner and we're able to pull that regional draw for the volleyball courts. And that's what the feasibility studies uh that that we did really says. So if if we can um get a partner that's going to operate that at a high level, they don't take a lot of space. And they could generate a lot of revenue, but it would take that partner coming in to do it and help us. Fund the construction of it to to make that make that work out. Otherwise, um I we believe one of the better opportunities based on our past review is. Expanding the multi use fields because they have so many different opportunities. We would go to fourteen fields, which would put us at by far, I believe, the largest facility in the Bay Area, right, for soccer and.
Bay Area, meaning where, what?
Uh.
Largest from here to Sac- to San Francisco to.
Derek might be able to help me on that one.
Here.
Yeah, um up to like Santa Rosa, over toward uh Tracy, uh Vacaville.
Okay, thank you.
Um I would like just to make some general comments. Um I I I I'm not in favor of um uh an option that doesn't have. Uh the 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 amount of parking that it should take. So I I just wanted to throw that out there, I I know you said, well, we we did that because maybe some other partner. And some other area is going to open up some parking, but um but we don't, we don't know that. And I I really appreciate my colleagues' questions, they were, they were really good. Um and I actually asked this question. That council member Martinez Beltran asks is, what's the value of of the? The the soccer courts compared to the volleyball courts? I I know that's a hard question, but uh that would be, if you can get some number, that would be something that would be valuable to us. To make a decision. Um and then finally, um I um. Um I I I just believe that um. We we have to. Do this in a smart way, especially with parking uh going forward and um. I um. I'll I'll leave it, I'll I'll leave it at that, that that's my my question is, I'm 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 just not not. For eliminating parking and and if we're going to limit what what we're going to do with functions like. We won't have soccer on the volleyball volleyball days. Well, that's limiting our revenue into this whole beautiful complex. So I would want to open up everything on any given day and and let's have some parking. Uh to handle that. Uh because I I I just don't think we should limit our revenue capabilities in this thing. So that was the question I I really wanted to to get out to you. So I'm um I'm done with my. Uh uh comments, so. Uh I'm going to look to the deputy city clerk to see if there's any public comments.
Yes, so Joe Baronowski?
Uh yeah, hi, um in theory, I love this uh idea and I think there's a fantastic job presenting these. Pictorials of the options, um you know, yeah, a hundred millions sounds like a lot, but. Um especially as some type of maybe ten to one um ratio, I mean, we spent twenty five million downtown in ten years. And we always hear, well, you know, you're forgetting, wow, we got all this, the the the. Uh amount of private investment was, you know, I don't know however many times that is, I don't have the number off the top of my head. But the problem is that that private investment has not resulted in public benefit. Uh and frankly, um no one's ever given any indication of what that might look like, I don't think it's ever going to. Um and yeah, and and so we 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 have this whole pillar that's supposed to be tourism. I thought the T bit presentation was fantastic and quite amazing, the uh the the amount of um. You know, the amount of uh uh public uh hits that the website and other methods are getting, but. You you know, to talk about um T to talk about tourism, every moving the needle. Um what would that take? I mean, I'm again, I've never seen anyone say, well, you know, this is, this is how we're going to go from X to Y. Um I can tell you that sixty four plus fifteen rooms of a boutique hotel are not going to move the needle, no matter how wonderful it turns out. And so, yeah, shooting for something like this to me makes, you know, perfect sense. And I would much rather inconsistent with saying that, you know, that's going to be so one of the pillars. Uh if we can't move the needle, then we'll keep talking about this sports and recreation as being a pillar. Uh to me, it doesn't make sense, I'd much, much rather see uh the focus here than uh on the unfortunate. Horrible place that the ball fields got moved to. Uh what does concern me a lot is this whole uh and and council member McKay kind of even uh. Got me more worried, uh the whole what's the environmental review going to be? You know, we heard about all this envelope and worst case once, we were looking at a hundred ninety two dock doors. And we were going to get worst case in an envelope and on and on and on. And basically, we were told that, well, those truck docks are never going to be used, we didn't get worst case. And so we do this, I don't know how much that's going to cost, you said it's not scoped. Um and then we want to come back and say, okay, we got to start somewhere, you know, um. I think it's going to be, again, just kind of like, you're going to point to this huge thing that nobody looks at and say, well. Well, we already looked at that and therefore we can proceed, so. I I I don't know, you know, what you're going to have in the environmental review, I I would suggest that you send the scoping. Uh uh document out before to for public comment before you issue any contract. But I I I think this is a great idea, thanks.
Mr. Baronowski, um.
I have no more speakers.
No more speakers, thank you very much. So moving forward, um we have council member Martinez Beltran, hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Protemp, um I appreciate the public comment, I appreciate the uh. The flexibility that you've presented today, you've clearly walked through this numerous numerous times. But I I do, I think it's it's worth going for, we we should, we should do it for our kids. We should try and make sure that we can figure out a way to make it work. We have and we can set a different trajectory than what we've seen to the north with San Jose. And and I think this is a a silver bullet, I mean, you and economic development, I I feel like I could. Completely get behind something like this, so. Um you know, if things are right, we we have, we I think we do need to talk to our environmental partners, I think that's an important piece. I think that we need to make sure that there's balance in that, um you know, what sports we're serving and that we're not. Just serving, I think we've had this conversation before, maybe offline, but that that we're serving all of the community, you know, boys, girls. And and making sure that that's accessible to everybody, that our local kids are able to use it. But I think that we should try and figure out how we would do it and and what would work. So I I would like to move that we approve the draft Condit Road Sports Facilities Master Plan.
Second. Okay, so we have a first and a second?
Yes, Mayor Protemp Bargeli.
I.
Council members.
Hold on, I'd like to make a comment. Oh, I I oh, I I'm I'm sorry, you overlooked me, so.
Okay. Do I, yes, so I am going to 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 say yes as well tonight. Uh but I don't know where I'm going to end up down the road, uh you you know, we're not a huge city, we have. Whatever we plan, we have to do with our means and 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 our means are extremely limited, the. The days of the big dream projects are gone, we don't have RDAs and their likes anymore these days. Uh and and whatever project it will be, I I want it to be as environmentally. Futuristic to really to really do something in a different way than it always has been done in the past. Uh and I agree with my colleague, I mentioned it earlier as well, a project without considering the parking needed is for me a no go. So I don't know if that eliminates one of the three options, but my uh. I I I it it's very hard to say, I goes the right. Fields, right, will these be the right fields twenty years from now? I don't know, maybe there will be something totally new coming up. Uh that's, I'm not the expert in that field, I look at others to. To do some research there to ma- make sure that whatever investment we do will not an investment for five years, there will be a long term investment. Uh and there has to be a lot of community uh benefits, uh. Uh not just for teams coming from outside, but also that we can help whoever we have in in locally here, uh in our town and beyond. So um. Let's see where this brings us, let's start a journey, but it might not be a long journey, we'll see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protemp Bargeli.
I.
Council members Martinez Beltran? Yes, McKay?
I.
Spring.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we're going to move on to item number ten. Um my my anticipation that this is going to take. Well beyond eleven eight eleven PM. Um so I I I just want just made possibly a little guidance that, do you want to maybe table this to another meeting?
Not necessarily, um it may be a quick discussion, it might be a longer one, and so um Chris, do you want me to start or do you want to roll it out?
Like, I could, I can start going if.
Yeah, so he can just, I mean, give a literally a two minute staff report, just setting the the um. The stage and basically it's whether or not council wants to make any revisions to the existing policy. And if the answer is no, then we're done, if it's yes, then we can bring it back.
So uh then I'm going to ask my colleagues if they would consider being as succinct as possible in their questions and. Uh moving forward, okay? Is that acceptable? Chris, you're on.
All right, so um council, this is just a a. A follow up item for our community of funding. Policy, this policy was developed uh by the council at the start of this year. And then utilized during the budget process to award community funding to um various groups. Attached to the the staff report uh is the policy. But the sole reason for bringing this back is at council request, different council members um during um the budget. As we approved the funding, mentioned that they wanted this item to come back so we could look at the criteria. That was approved by council and updated. Staff does not have um recommendations on updating it, we think we could leave it how it is through um this site, this cycle. Um and um look at it again um in the in next year or the following year, once we've completed a full cycles of providing the funding. But if council has seen specific problems and wants to make changes, that's what the problems or ideas for improvement, that's what this item is for. Just because it was requested, that concludes my uh staff report.
Thank you, so I'm going to look to um council for uh questions, so uh council member Spring, you you, I I saw your hand this time, so. So council member Spring, you, you, I, I saw your hand this time, so.
Okay, good, good. I'll, I'll keep it short. The, the, I, I, I don't see a need for major change. The, the only one I think that's discussed before is, is that one E, I, I really don't think that's needed. The existing programs, events may be given priority. I, I don't know why we have that in. I think it might exclude other new groups or events coming that we don't know of yet. And I don't want to exclude anything that, that I think would be an awesome fit. Why should they be given lower priority versus something that I'm not that crazy about? That's my only.
Oh, thank you, council member Spring. So council member McKay?
So my question, I think I've, I got two, but I'm going to keep it to one. Had an instance where funding was requested for basically an improvement. How do we go back and make sure that those funds were used after the fact?
So I believe you'd be talking about the improvements to the Grange facility. Because that's the one that there was an improvement for. So that's been installed, but within the agreement that has been established by the city per direction, not only do we verify that that's occurred, we make sure that they provide receipts showing that they expended the money on that. And in that case, we have a multi, now a multi-year agreement that the Grange will be opened as a cooling station. So, so we verified that with an agreement. And the, all the community funding recipients will report out to the council at, at the end of the year with a report.
Okay, so, yeah, and that was one of my questions was, we know that ongoing events need to report, but I didn't know the one-time.
Yes.
The one-time funding need to be. Do we give them a check in advance or do they pay for it and then they send the city the receipts?
My preference is they pay for it and send the receipts. But in some circumstances, we have organizations that are not able to, that were approved, that were not able to put the money up, upfront. They didn't have that. So we've provided them the money first and then are requiring the receipts to be provided to us. But they are in contract with the city to do that or else they'd be held responsible.
Thank you. I should, I should have known that you guys were very careful shepherds of our funds. That's it, I'm going to end right there. Thank you.
Okay, okay, so I'll, I'll go. Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I, I just would like to suggest going forward that somehow there's some capability to show what, what benefits, both financial and community to the city were receiving for these groups. So that, that's, that's my only comment. I, I would love to see some component of that in there.
We, we can try and do that in the noted, noted, and we'll try and do it in the annual report outs from the group and ask them to help quantify that and we can, we can build upon that.
Thank you, Chris. So I'd like to open it up to the public at this time and look to the deputy city clerk and see if there's any members of the public that would wish to speak either in here or online.
No, sir, I don't see any speakers.
Okay, so then I'm going to send it back to the council for any action items or discussion. So I, I saw council member Spring's hand right here.
Yeah, so I'm ready to make a motion to, to accept the policy with the change to remove E, I think it's one E?
One E.
Existing programs, events may be given priority. I don't think that needs to be in there.
Second. Any further comments?
Any other comments?
Well, my comment is I don't see it as broken. I would leave it because there are many organizations which give back to, quite a bit to the community that have been doing this for a long time. And so I think that, you know, we do get benefit from these events. If it was stricken, I don't, you know, I, I don't think it would break my heart because basically we make that decision every year. And if something changes, then we don't. But I also don't see the need to take it out either because we would override that if we felt that it was not appropriate. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. So that's actually my comment too. So I, I, I would like to leave it in because we can, we can always, you know, at the time when we discuss things about each of the nonprofits, you know, we can, we can eliminate it at that time and we can make the priority. You know, we can, we can do anything. So we don't, we don't have to exclude, you know, people because of that, because, you know, we'll make that decision. So I'm, I'm, I'm leaning against the motion unless somebody has a, a friendly motion to go on top of that.
I don't, I don't have a friendly amendment, but I just would like to add, I guess, at this point, should, should add a little bit of context to my second. And I agree with what both council member Borjeli and McKay have said, that, you know, there's some existing programs and they bring such great, I mean, there are some programs and events that we do that I have grown up my whole life doing and I could not imagine them not being part of our, of our community. So to me, I guess that, you know, they never would really experience not having, not being warranted. And I think that that was maybe what my colleague is saying. But in the interest of it is a new policy, it's a newer policy. And I think, you know, to, to be a new policy and for anybody and everybody to feel that they are being welcome to submit their requests, I am going to go ahead and, and support the motion to strike E. I think it maybe just would be a little more equitable if we're leaving it open for everybody, so. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Before you go to a local vote, just to clarify, a yes vote means that you're you're moving, striking E, and no vote means you're leaving the policy as is.
Ah, okay.
It's 10:59, so I might just recommend you extend the meeting for five minutes.
I'm sorry?
I would recommend you extend the meeting for five minutes just to get through this and then also if there's any future agenda items.
So you want me to extend the meeting right now?
Yeah, if we get a motion and then.
Okay, so I.
Get the motion? I called it, called it.
Move to extend the meeting time for five minutes.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, so a, a, a quick local call, just so legal?
Mayor Protem Borjeli?
I.
Council members Martinez Beltran? I. McKay?
I.
Spring?
I'll, I'll look to.
Then council member McKay called the question on the vote on the policy. So that's not debatable. You can, unless there's somebody objects, then you just vote.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll vote now. Yeah.
The, the, I just want to clarify what you said. So a, a no vote and a, or if there's not a majority, that the existing policy remains in place?
Yes, you're not, you're not being asked to change anything on the existing policy. So this would be an amendment to the existing policy. But if the motion fails, the existing policy remains in place.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So deputy clerk?
Mayor Protem Borjeli?
Uh, no.
Council members Martinez Beltran? Hi. McKay?
No.
Spring?
Yes.
Motion fails. So the item is then just done and no change to the policy at this time?
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to a future council initiated agenda items. Would any council member like to add anything in that area? Not tonight. Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting for tonight. But before, before I actually end, I just would like to say a big thank you to staff for the first in-person hybrid. It went flawlessly and that only goes to show the amount of time and energy and work that you guys put into it. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, and my colleagues agree with me, I'm sure. Just a big thank you for doing a fabulous job. Good night, everyone.